What setup you got?
Thank you, yeah, so we just started in June. Uh as well as with the radio station, so the radio station is brand new, we are brand new. Um I'm a project leap graduate, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with.
Uh what kind of graduate, say again?
Project leap.
Okay, I don't know, sure, but it's okay.
So project leap is part of the Ryan White um Houston program.
Okay.
And so once a year they host a seventeen week course. That is dedicated to people that with HIV and it's a and people who are affected by it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so they teach you in the seventeen weeks about everything what's going on with the Ryan White. You know, Ryan White is um funding that gets through Congress. So Congress uh has already approved, it's called the Ryan White Care Act. And they provide funding for HIV. And so part of that funding is you have to have a council. And that council has like allocates the money that goes into it, so we provide. We don't say this agency gets this money, we just say um physicians get thirty percent. Outpatient services gets, you know, the pharmacy gets twenty percent. Uh social workers get five percent or you know down the line. But it teaches you how to like be involved more with um you know the HIV community in Houston. And um so I went through that seventeen weeks and I graduated. And so um I started this show.
Congratulations.
Because of it, I just saw that there was a, there was a need for um a show awareness about HIV. So Houston Houston is currently the number twelve city in the nation for new HIV diagnosis.
Number twelve city?
Number twelve.
Okay.
And we provide zero funding for HIV for HIV prevention. And through the city, the city provides zero dollars.
Does the city do any testing? Or not nothing for testing?
They don't provide nothing, the city doesn't do nothing. I mean, we, they talk up, we have, they don't do, they don't do, they really don't do anything.
It's a humanitarian issue.
Um the county does, so the county just launched a huge um campaign with the CDC. But that's like county funds that they provide for HIV prevention. The city Houston hasn't really provided any money towards HIV prevention. And that's what we want to change.
At least testing or at least like uh we could do anonymous test testing.
There's something, yes.
Something.
Something, so that's what we're looking for, we're looking for, you know, this is the council. To start spending some money on HIV funding, you know HIV um.
What what do you think, what do you think the city should spend money specifically on as it relates to HIV?
Uh really, we need HIV prevention, so that means awareness campaign, that means HIV, that means prep. Which is prep is a tool that we use for HIV, it's it, we now we have two drugs. And one is Truvada and the other one is Discovi. And you can take either dr- either one drug and it prevents HIV, so it's a ninety nine percent effectiveness. If you, as long as you take it as prescribed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which means.
It's if if you're having, if you're having unprotected sex, you should, you should take the.
Or any kind of risky sex or if you don't, if you have um on the regular.
So we're uh.
Multiple partners.
We're, yeah, I under- I understand that, so can is that, is that, is that a medicine available publicly, is it expensive?
Everything, yes, it is available, it is expensive, so um usually for thirty, for thirty days that you, if you don't have insurance, it'll probably cost you. Any between like ten thousand dollars a month, if you don't have insurance. Yeah, it's super expensive, but now they'll say like, oh, you can get on programs like um Gillette currently has. A program you can get on to if you're, if you're like low income or Ryan White does cover some of it. And if you're low income.
If you don't have insurance.
But if you don't have insurance, it's su- yes, yes.
They should have it like at uh either Planned Parenthood or something like that for a lower nominal cost, like thirty bucks a month.
At a three dollar. Yes. If that, but that's what we see right this second is that we don't have that, and so that's what we're trying, it's in Houston. Now, New York, San Francisco, Atlanta, um they're spending thirty forty million dollars a year. In funding for HIV prevention, their rates are zero, zero, they're almost at zero patients, new infections, but.
That's actually really good.
They're spending the money.
Well, not only it's, they're, they're spending the money, they're getting people interested.
Yes.
They're engaging people, because it's more than just spending money.
Correct.
It's you gotta, you gotta have a whole campaign, you gotta get people interested. You gotta get them active in it, you gotta get them promoting it, it's a humanitarian issue.
So California just passed, I think it was California that just passed the bill that makes um prep um over the counter. Which I'm not sure if I agree with, because um part of taking prep, you need to be, you should be um getting. Every three, every three months you should have lab work, just to make sure that prep is working first of all, your levels are right. And make sure that nothing else is wrong with you, like your liver functions, your bone marrow. And making sure that all your, everything else is working properly, because we do know that like with Truvada beforehand, when before Discovi, Discovi just got. Um available last month. So it's really only had been one drug for the previous like five years, ten years, we've only had one drug to prevent HIV. And now the Discovi is, the Discovi is a much um safer drug, but a lot of people are not aware of it. So we still wanna make sure that people are still getting tested every three months, and who's gonna, if you're self pay, who, you don't really, and. So if you're self paying, it's great that the medicine's over the counter and you only have to pay maybe like twenty bucks for the medication. But what about your lab work? You know, you can, you be, you can be taking.
Just because you're taking the medicine doesn't mean you don't have it or spreading it.
Or spreading it, correct, so if you take, it really does nothing for you. So we wanna make sure that people who are currently taking it stage HIV negative. Because that's, that's a proof that shows that if you take it at, if you take it um as prescribed, which is once a day. Um you will be, you should like it's ninety percent effectiveness, which is great. But at the same time, like how do we know that um nothing else is going wrong? You're like your liver's still going right, you know? Like ten years from now, you don't need a liver transfer, because you've been taking HIV medications, you know? So at the same rate, we wanna make sure that you're healthy. So I wanna make sure that people are aware that you should, yes, take the medication if it's right for you, but also get tested on a regular basis and get your blood work done. But how do we communicate all that and how do we fund all that stuff, because it costs money?
Well, I think it, I think it's more of an epidemic, I think it's.
It is an epidemic at the moment.
For the fir- first question, you say it costs money, but how much does it cost if we don't do anything about it?
Yeah, no, you're right, you're absolutely right.
I think it costs more if we don't do anything about it, in human life, in loss of a lot of things. In loss of labor.
Yes.
There's a lot of different ways to look at it, but it's the biggest thing is it's, it's a humanitarian issue.
It is.
Whether you're Republican, whether you're Democrat, whether you're Libertarian, you should be able to agree on just the basic humanitarian issues. And one of them is, you know, um AIDS is an epidemic, it's, it's an epidemic, whether we like it or not, it's an epidemic. At least we can educate people on it and give them options.
Yep, so we're no longer using AIDS anymore, so AIDS is.
HIV.
HIV, yeah, so. AIDS AIDS is the diagnos- is um like, yeah, your actual disease, but HIV is the diagnosis that you receive. So we're getting away from AIDS and we're looking for if you, if you got diagnosed with AIDS, which is a stage three HIV, that, that's what we're calling it now.
Okay, 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 so there's stages.
Yeah.
HIV being very first.
Yep.
And the whole idea is if you do have, have HIV to catch it and to take drugs to, you know.
Make you undetectable, so once you're taking drugs, I currently have HIV. And I started with advanced HIV, so I got, when I got diagnosed, I had, uh my, my T cell count was at ten. So I should really be dead by now. If I would not be taking the medication, but because I am, my T cell count now like at four hundred. And I'm currently undetectable, which means I cannot pass it to anybody, you know, I'm, I'm safe. I'm practicing good practices, but at the same time, what about somebody else who's not doing it?
Doesn't know and isn't educated, they don't have any options, they have their medication, it's not doing the treatment.
So we wanna make sure we catch the people who are currently not, uh who are currently um HIV positive. Get them into treatment and stay in treatment, so they're undetectable, so that means they can't pass it along to anybody else. And if you're undetectable, make sure you have prep, so that you cannot pass it, so you cannot contract it.
What do you, what do you think of like um of? So I, I see that it's like, and I could be wrong, man, um I see first you say, you know, if you're gonna have sex, try to have safer sex. Try to, you know, uh be careful with, you know, um, you know, who you're getting with. Understand that, you know, uh people have different STDs.
Yes.
Um and that age is just one of them, that uh what herpes is maybe one in five, all these other STDs, syphilis, all, all these STDs exist. And your chance when you're having sex of getting a, uh getting a STD is relatively high, if you don't know, you know, the history. And if, if you don't know your history, or you know, if you aren't practicing safe.
Yes.
Sex, both of y'all, there's, there's a chance of getting something. The worst case scenario, of course, being AIDS, or excuse me, HIV, HIV. But there's other things that you could get and you probably are passing, you don't understand that you're passing.
No, you're right, you're one hundred percent right there.
So it's the first, the step one is just uh realizing that there's a problem. As much, it's, it's like, a lot of people don't realize that there's a problem, especially younger kids. They don't realize that there's chances of getting uh STDs.
Yeah.
So it's education.
So STDs are not, you know, so this pill does not prevent you from getting STD.
Of course it doesn't, but it all does is it stops you from getting HIV.
Yes.
But you still, you still could get uh syphilis, herpes, gonorrhea, uh warts, uh HPV.
Yes.
All that type of stuff.
And those are all real and those are all happening here in Houston. And what I'm not understanding is like, why can't we address that problem by offering such, you know, like? People wanna say abstinence, but we know that abstinence does not work.
Well, that, look, they're all options, they're all, they're all options, one option's absent.
Yes.
And it's just an, it's an option.
That's one option, correct.
And it's not, it's not, it's not, and it's not the right option for everybody, for a lot of reasons, so it's not the right option. There's uh safer practices, uh using, you know, uh condoms, procolactives, whatever. There's, you know, maybe being more selective with your partner choice. There's different, and then if you are gonna be, if you aren't gonna be selective with your partner choice. Then, you know, be sure you try to protect yourself, or at least know the risk you're going into.
Yes.
Most people don't know about herpes and all, I, I think if you did, you did a statistic of all the different chances of getting different age, getting STDs, it's probably like one out of two. That's my guess, it's about one out of two.
I mean, yeah, I think you may be right, because um.
Herpes is one out of five.
It's, it's really, it's really hard to understand that the fact that people are not really aware.
Because no one talks about it, no one talks about it, that's why you aren't aware, you have, people have no clue. Because there's no, there's nothing on the radio, there's nothing, there's, no one's talking about it. What they're doing instead is they're griping about other, they're griping about, you know, this, they just gripe, they're arguing, they're, they're spreading hate. And they're just, they're hating instead of educating.
Yeah, so anyways, I'm, I'm, I just became a part of the Ryan White Panting Council. On one of their um, I think I'm on the affected communities. And um it, it's just, it, it baffles me to learn all this information that like where. I was like, where was this information before I got, before I got tested positive?
No, it didn't exist.
You know, like, it did exist, it's just it wasn't available, like I had no idea that Ryan White existed, I had no idea that there was this. Um you could get uh HIV test for free, you just need to know where to go to, you know? You do, you can get free HIV testing, you can do.
You can Montrose Clinic, you can get free test.
Montrose Clinic, um Thomas Street offers for HIV testing.
And they do anonymously, they do anonymously at the Montrose Clinic.
The AIDS Foundation offers free HIV testing, you know, there's so, all these resources that are available, but. Nobody seems to know about it, or nobody's really talking about it, so this is why I started the show. So that we can bring awareness to Houston and, and really, we are the fourth largest city in the, in America. And we will be number three, number third come twenty twenty, when the census gets done. I'm one hundred percent sure, we are, if, if we do it correctly, if we count for every, you know, if we count anybody, we will be number three now. If we don't, then that would be a problem, but. Yet, we're not doing anything about HIV, we're not doing anything about making sure that people have access to healthcare, you know?
That's true.
And uh having access to healthcare is the main thing, is to get everybody. You know, so once you are, once me, you, um everybody, when we see our doctor. We should, and we get blood tech, we get a blood work done, HIV should be included in there.
I agree.
But it's not, because insurance company at the moment, they can refuse to pay for an HIV test. Should you not be systematic?
Insurance companies or insurance companies are a problem, that's the, that's the, that's the original.
That's another problem, yes.
I know that, because I'm an insurance lawyer, I sue insurance companies for a living, by the way.
You have that big sign off of a PC gesture.
That's my office.
Is that your office?
Mm-hmm.
I have a client in that, in that um road, um. What's, what's that road called?
West TC Gester, it's West TC Gester.
Yeah, yeah, but what's that road called that you, it's actually on?
Brookwoods.
Brookwoods, yes, so I have a client, so I, I passed your name off every, for the past year. I passed your name up, I'm thinking, who is this guy? And here you are at my show. But yeah, so I've seen, I've seen your um, your office, like I have a client that lives like. I think like, maybe like ten doors down from you, it's a little bit past um, I think it's a childcare. That's right there, and, and they're like right next to her, like on the other side of it.
Yeah, about midway through the street, the right inside, you passed it today, yeah, it's like adult daycare.
It's adult daycare, yeah. Is it adult daycare or is it a child daycare?
They have a few, there's so, there's a child daycare, it depends on which one you're talking about, they might have an adult daycare, but I think it's a child daycare.
I think it's a child daycare, it's right decorated with like all Halloween stuff and um. Um but yeah, so we, I, I, I pass it daily, only one night through Friday, at least because I have a client that lives off of that street. And I'm like, who is this guy, who is this guy?
What I've learned is you don't, you don't, you take every little advantage you have and you use it, whether you like it or don't like it. I did not like my name growing up, I didn't like it one bit, but I found as a lawyer, you can make a play off. And I, again, I accept the things I cannot change, and I try to change the things I can.
That's right.
That's years of alcoholism and getting over it, you just, you just, you realize what you got and you do the best you got with it.
Yeah, anyway, so I'm really excited that you came on and to talk about um, glad you sent me that message, that text.
Yeah, that's, that I have a, a group of volunteers that, that push it out.
Thank you.
I'm happy you responded, happy you responded.
And even though I, I did tell you, because I wasn't gonna vote for you.
That's okay, I can, I'll be your second pick.
Yes.
I'll be your, and I'm happy being the second choice. Uh the biggest thing is like. It's a humanitarian issue, it really, really, really is.
Yes.
And we need to let, we need to, it, it doesn't need to be a, a political type of thing. It needs to be regardless of party, regardless of anything, we gotta care about people above everything else. And what we don't wanna have happen, I mean, if the more people we can save from going through that hardship.
Yes.
Of at least HIV, of, there's other STDs that are not very pleasant, but at least save the hardship of HIV. Or at least if, if we could stop one, two, three, a handful of them, that's a big start. It's the same way with the, the animal epidemic, it's the same way with the homeless epidemic, and my big issue is with the city. I mean, there's a lot of ways you can look at it, but what we gotta do is we gotta stop the corruption, because we need that money for real things. We need to actually do stuff, we need to try to help people and try to, instead of help ourselves, that's the way I feel.
I'm glad you brought up um, or animal thing, because I, I own a, so my client have, they have two dogs, and so I own a pet city company. And I walk their dogs midday, so that's what I own, I have a pet city company and um, that's my full-time job, this is what I do on Mondays. And um, you know, I cease, I, we have, I have a nonprofit, so we help out patients who go into the hospital. Who don't have um somebody to take care of their animal while they're in the hospital. So at no charge to them, zero cost. So we currently have a dog that's got, been with me for two months, and she's gonna be with me for another like four months. While he's, while he goes to the rehab and he's currently in a, in a um. We have center slash nursing home, you know, to get better, while he, you know, he had a stroke and he has no one to care of his service dog. And he's not able to take care of his service dog while he's in the hospital trying to learn how to walk and how to do all these necessities. You know, so this dog, he can't help with this dog and the staff is not willing to take care of dogs, so what happens to his dog while he's recuperating?
Situation to be fair, it's.
You know?
It's a difficult situation.
It is, so that's what we come in and play and we'll take the dog and they'll stay with me as long as they need to, until their owner is back and but healthy.
Are they, are they paying for it, are you doing it free, are you doing it for donations?
Free, it's completely free, if they're able to pay, if they're able to send a donation afterwards, that's great, but. I don't really worry about that, because a lot of, a lot of the people who we do end up helping have no money. You know, are people.
It's like bad, they're in bad situations.
They're already in the bad situation to begin with.
There's no.
So we've taken care of ducks before, we've taken care of alligator, uh not alligator, but like of um snakes and reptiles and. Blood orange, I think it's blood orange, um or blood something.
Like a bad, or something?
It's, it's a reptile. I mean, we've, we take care of everybody, but like. People don't have, you know, when they go, then you know, we had somebody who's like, I don't want my neighbors to know that I'm in the hospital. Like they're gonna be like all over me, please don't tell them I'm in the hospital. So what I would do, like all the, she, she contacted me, she hired me, I'm not sure what's happening. Where are the pet city company, that's all we are, you know, when we, for the people. And one on one, you know, there's no charge, there's no nothing, you know, you can pay us as, if you want to, you know, but. Most of them don't have any money.
Well, you're just, you're doing that for the goodness of your heart, you're just trying to help.
And I can.
Especially because you're, you're a humanitarian, you're, you're an advocate.
I'm an advocate for pets and for people living with HIV now.
Nothing's wrong, I mean, I'm an advocate too, I'm an advocate for a lot of things.
Um alright, so let's go live, let's go ahead. Alright. So welcome to Real Talk One Hundred Radio, we are live with Paul's Impact Houston's first radio show dedicated to people living with HIV, their friends and family. We are currently joined with Eric Dick, he is uh, he is currently running for city council at large, position five. So I'm trying to get my mic straight, you guys, so just bear with me. Alright, so maybe I won't get it straight. Um these tables are a little bit bad, but it's alright, we're good together. Alright guys, so I just wanna have um, so as you said, we are currently live with Eric Dick, he is running for city council, position five, at large five. We wanna hear what he has to say, what his, you know, um, why did he decide to run, he is an attorney. And um we'll take it from there, so welcome Eric, welcome to Paul's Impact, we're glad that you're here.
Thank you for having me very much, I appreciate it.
Let me make sure your mic.
Is it on?
I, I'm not sure, did you, is it on, there you go.
Hello, hello, okay, thank you for having me, I appreciate you having me. I, I first turn off, I'm actually elected as a trustee for Harris County Department of Education.
Okay.
I have, I've served in that role as a vice president and also as a, oh um interim president. And there, you know, um what we've done is we started the first school for um people with drug problems. And I thought that was uh good that the county started the very first public school for um, you know, people that have uh drug problems. I say that because I don't, personally, I've had drug problems in the past and, you know, in my life. And I understand that, you know, people that use drugs, um they have bigger things in life, they aren't really there because they are trying to hurt people. They're usually there because they're, they have uh problems and emotional problems with themselves. So I thought it was really good that the Department of Education started Fortis Academy, that was, it's dedicated, you know, um. For people with the kind of substance abuse problems. I also think it's good what you're doing, is that you're trying to bring awareness to people with HIV. And just uh bring awareness to, you know, issues such as that, um the possibility of getting STDs. Uh the high likelihood, if you have untype, uh you know, you have unsafe type of sex. I think just education is uh, I think it's something that's lacking, I also think that politicians in general, um they're more interested, unfortunately. Uh some, I'm gonna be positive, I don't wanna be negative, I think some, I think some politicians are more interested in uh themselves and helping others. Or at least being um, trying to be an advocate for people. I think if you wanna be elected to anything, and it actually me being elected, you know, you try to represent everybody. You especially try to represent the people you disagree with.
Oh wow, okay.
That, that's what a true advocate does, and the reason you try to represent the people you disagree with is because you try to listen to them, because you know what? Sometimes, sometimes they're right, and sometimes if you talk to them and you hear what they had to say, sometimes they convince you. That's, that's actually happened to me a few times, it happened to me with the Department of Education. Um I say that because whenever I first uh got elected, I was elected on the platform of shutting the department down. I was convinced that that was, it was a waste of money, and then what I did is I did my homework. I actually went to the apartment, I saw this, the people it helped, and I saw actually how it turned one dollar into five dollars. And then I, they changed my mind, I was, I admitted I was wrong, because we're all human and sometimes we do make mistakes. So you know, that's. One of the reasons I'm running is I just, I'm doing it just because I wanna help people, and I enjoy doing it at the, I. And I enjoy doing it at the, I enjoy doing it at the department, I'm able to help people in the department, but I think, I think too many people at the city. Are more focused on their own special interests. Trying to just find common ground, wherever it is.
True, true, I agree, I agree.
Um, some of the ways to find hu- common ground are humanitarian issues. Like I, I really do like what you're doing, how you're trying to push for testing. Try, you're trying to push for public funding on, on HIV. On just uh, anything involving around uh, education on STDs.
Yes.
Like what we were talking about before on the air. And I, I, I bet you if you take the percentage of people that have HIV, that have uh. Uh herpes, that have all the different STDs, I bet you it's a one out of two chance that you're gonna get something if you sleep with somebody. And I think. Too many young kids don't know that. Too many people in high school don't know if you're having sex with somebody, you got a one in two chance, a one of five chance of it being herpes. Maybe a one in, uh, maybe a one in five chance of it being HPV. Uh, you know, all genital warts, all those type of things. Uh, people think that you could just, and don't get me wrong, I'm not saying abstinence is the answer, cuz it's not, it's absolutely not the answer. It might be the answer for some and I'm not gonna criticize or say anything mean to the people. Or, you know, I've, in fact, if they've decided abstinence is their lifestyle, I'm all proud of them, you know, I can't. You can't, that, that's their choice, and you gotta respect their choice. Just the same is if somebody decides to have a lot of partners, they need, they need to understand what risks they have. And I think too many people don't understand that. I think just. The fact, the matter is, people just aren't educated. And that's not to be, that's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, we just gotta try to enlighten them. And I think that's one of the roles of, you know, of an elected person is try to, you know, shed light. Try to open people's eyes, try to, try to show them that, you know. That if you are having unprotected sex, there's chances of stuff happening that you don't necessarily want to happen. And then if it does happen, you at least, you should get options. And I think it's sad that the city's not, not doing any funding for HIV, I really do, because it's a humanitarian issue. Why can we give ninety-five thousand dollars to an intern? How much, how much would ninety-five thousand dollars help the HIV community, at least be something? Right? Or we can give, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm, I'm actually an advocate for art, I'm an advocate for a lot of things. But I don't know why we have music at, at uh, the airports, it's three hundred thousand dollars we're spending for music in the airports. And don't get me wrong, I would, I'm, I actually am a musician. I like playing the bass guitar, I like music. But there's not a reason for music in the airport, what we need to do. With the money we have. We need to try to help people, we need to try to eliminate special interest. We wanna minimize special interest, we wanna try to maybe be selfless, instead of, instead of selfish. We need to expect our politicians, whether they're Republican, whether they're Democrat, whether they're independent, whether, whatever party they are. We need to expect them to put people first, above party. Above politics, above all those things. That's what we should expect. Maybe if our politicians are doing stuff like that. Maybe we could. Like it's a nonpartisan race, maybe we could be proud of them. Maybe we could be proud, you know, of the city that we are. Well, I, I am, and don't get me wrong, I, I say that, I'm proud, I'm proud of the city, I'm, I think we've done a lot of good things. But we need to be honest about the issues. And we need to, above all things, try to help each other. I don't think we do that enough.
That's uh, very interesting to, you know, to hear you say that as well too, because you know, that's exactly right, we're not really doing. A lot of, we're spending a lot of money elsewhere, where we couldn't be spending money on HIV funding or. Um. Whatever the case is, we could spending the money except for spending, you know, we're spending all this money. Elsewhere and they're like, oh, that money is um, dedicated to this, or we need, we need to spend X amount of dollars on, on arts or.
Ninety-five thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand dollars for an intern, and don't get me wrong, where's the application? I'd like to apply. I've got more experience than the person they hired, I've been practicing law for ten years, I have a masters, I'd still take that. They want me to pour coffee for ninety-five thousand, that's great, I'll pour it. But what we should really be doing with the money, instead of lining people's pockets, is helping people. That's what we should really be doing. And we need to be transparent. That's another thing about the city. Because you talk about it, this, you hear the city say it needs more money. And maybe it does, I'm not saying it does or it doesn't. What I'm saying is if it truly needs more money, it needs to show where every penny is being spent, show it in a transparent way. Whenever it hides stuff, it makes people question it. Right?
Yes.
So in, in, I don't think the city's being very honest. Part of, part of um, being representing somebody, you have to be honest. Whenever you're honest and you're transparent. People at least see your perspective and they'll understand you.
True, true.
That's what I've found, I might, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a bad word. I'm actually an elected Republican, I consider myself more of an independent. And in my board, I get along better with the Democrats than I do the Republicans. And the reas- the reason I do is because I'm honest. I explain my position and I listen. Not enough people listen.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Because what they do is they have their minds set up. And they think they're right no matter what.
True.
But whenever you listen, you might be surprised. Changed, people have changed my mind plenty of times.
Yes, yes, yes.
I just need to hear it if I understand it and I, I see where the, where the perspective is. That, that's, that's how, that's the way I view government, it, it might be odd, but that's the way I view it.
Um, no, I'm glad that you're saying that you, you know, you identify as Republican, but yet you still decided to come on my show. Which is, you know, which is um, a show really for um, HIV. And we don't really see that Republicans, you know, e- even, even though we say Republicans or Democrats, we don't really see. And the other side participating in, in healthcare fund, you know?
Right, right.
And we, we came a little bit thirty minutes earlier, so we got to talk a little bit about HIV. And um, it really surprised me when you were talking to me about, you know, you are completely for HIV prevention.
Hundred percent, cuz it's a humanitarian issue, it's too expensive not to do it, I wanna be clear. It's too expensive not to do it. How much money does it cost us with new people being diagnosed with HIV? How much money does it cost us, cuz now we have to pay for the healthcare? And people, people say that, you know, we, there's not free healthcare. And to, to, to some extent, that's true, but some to extent it's not. Because then now you have people going to Ben Top.
Yes, yes.
And we're paying for it.
Right.
We need to be actually honest about what we're paying for, and we need to be, the whole thing we need to be honest about. And too many times we're being dishonest, we're picking a side, uh, whether it's the Bloods or the Crips and we're arguing the side of that gang. And I think that's wrong. I think it's possible to be an advocate for the people regardless of party, regardless of anything. Because, I mean. That's, that's my problem, is people's, people will sit there and they'll spit, you know, uh, whatever, whatever. Political parties ideology, when it's not true. What should be really important is helping people. And the fact that our community's suffering, we're wrong for not doing it. The fact that people, uh, the fact that afford, that, well, actually, here's the bigger thing. The fact that there's drugs available, that could stop people from getting HIV. And the city's not doing anything about it, that's kinda hogwash. That's really, really sad that the city's not doing anything about it. I, I, I think that's, the fact that's, as a Christian, I find that immoral. I find that immoral that we're able to help somebody and we aren't gonna, we aren't gonna go down that path, it is kind of immoral. The fact that we'd rather do things that are. Questionable, and we'd rather, you know, give payoffs to our friends, that's what the politicians are doing, just be honest, they're giving payoffs to their friends. They'd rather do that instead of help themselves. People shouldn't be going into office to get rich, they should be going in office to help people. And I actually am independently wealthy mainly because I'm a plaintiff's lawyer, I've been doing that. And I do a good job at that. And I do that for money, and I do it for money cuz I'm able to help people. Any, I have to, for my soul, for my person, I have to do stuff to help people. That's my journey. I can't, if I'm not helping people, I'm not happy. I'm just not happy.
Yes.
And I think, I think we don't have enough politicians that are in it for the community. There are too many people in it for themselves. I don't, I think that's wrong, I think it's just wrong.
Um, so would you agree that the, the whole pay for playing? Is immoral and um, it needs, it needs to be stopped immediately? Uh, you know, I have a lot of people that say, um. This has been happening forever.
It's nonpartisan and it happens, it ha- don't, okay, so first step one, admit we have a problem. It exists, right?
Step one is admit you have a problem, I think.
Twelve steps like alcoholism, and I, and I am a recovering alcoholic, I just wanna. Be clear, I'm, I, I say that, but I've, I've been good for years, I was in bands in my twenties and. I had a good time, I had a good time in my life, and then. You know, I struggled, I was a pizza driver, I ended up um. You know, through perseverance, I ended up graduating college, going to law school. And doing, then, I was doing stuff before, but I felt like I had more of a meaningful impact, now being a lawyer. I say all that because. Um, I had a point. I had a point and I lost it, I'm sorry.
We can circle back to it, I'm sure, I'm sure it's gonna get back to it. You know, I'm just, um, I wanna just real quick introduce Lady Hill, she's my co-host. And she's the executive director for, um. Shining Stars Academy and it's a charter school. And she's try, she's trying to start a charter school, so I'll just get that out of the way. But also we.
Oh, Amber Alert, Amber Alert, okay, we good. Sorry, Amber Alert. Hope they find the child.
Everybody is.
Beeping.
Everybody's beeping.
Yeah.
Um. But. You know, it's, it's just really, you know, I wanted to talk about a little bit about, um, not only about HIV, but about issues that are happening in Houston. And we just got done with the flooding. Um, Emilda came in. Came in and, and it happened so fast. Uh, I got caught in the rain as well too, just with a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people did, I thought I could race. To beat it, and I was very wrong. And um, you know. I just cannot believe that Houston, we get flooded all the time. And nothing is being done about it, we talk about it, we talk about it, we voted on a new tax increase. For flooding, for drainage, um, that money is not going towards that. You know, so as, as, as city council elected. What is your plans on flooding, what is your plans on helping the city of Houston? Get out of this, any kind of thunderstorms, I, I, I didn't know if today I was gonna get flooded or not. Dallas got a, uh, uh, Dallas got a tornado. And luckily, here in Houston, we didn't really receive any, but a little bit of rain. It was a little bit of hard rain because there was some streets that weren't flooded, but I could tell. That they were, the potential to be flooded. Should, just a little bit, three inches or four inches of rain pops in and. You know, I can't access my clients' houses, I told you, I'm a, I, you know, I'm a dog walker. If I can't see my client, I can't get paid, you know? And so what can you do about flooding that I'm, you know, and it's just not for one district? You know, you're running for an at-large position which everybody can vote for.
Yes.
You know, so what can a council member do? If the mayor. Doesn't wanna put anything for flooding, you know, so like if we can't get anything for flooding, how can we? Prevent more.
Uh, the Amber Alert.
You can get more Amber Alerts. Okay, so first, um. First, I'd like to note that as a profession, I'm a home insurance lawyer. And out of all the people running for office, in fact, out of all the attorneys in Houston, I've probably seen the most people flooded. Out of Hurricane Harvey.
Yes.
Just on the two-year anniversary, over a hundred people hired me. I've represented over two thousand people. There's no, there's no hair on the top of my head. Success is measured a lot of ways. I enjoy what I do, I enjoy helping people, I enjoy helping people, that, that's really why I am a home insurance lawyer. I tried to do divorce and other type of law, I just didn't really like it.
Okay.
Because I'm, then I'm hurting people.
Yeah.
Whenever, whenever I'm suing an insurance company, I enjoy it, because mainly, you know. You have somebody that's been kinda thrown under the bus, you have a victim and I'm going there and advocating on behalf of the victim. And I enjoy that, I enjoy advocating for people.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm gonna pivot that to with the city of Houston, cuz we have a way too many people who are getting flooded. You have the tax they sailed in two thousand fifteen, Hurricane Harvey, you've had Emilda. And you've, and this is only three, there's been a lot more, in fact, there's a, there was a flood on uh, Halloween too.
Yes.
Every year, it seems like we're being flooded, and the city isn't doing anything about it.
We were flooded on my birthday, so my birthday is May ninth. And I'm not sure if everybody remembered, but we were all, we, it was a heavy downpour that night, and the only reason I remember is because. I had all my friends come out and celebrate for my birthday. We were having dinner and the rain was just pouring down the rain and we barely made it. To our house, the streets were so flooded. And we were driving uh, a Cadillac, and so they're a little bit low to the ground. And I was like, are we gonna make it home? Just from this little, this little bit of rain that just downpoured on us. It's just a little bit, it was raining for like thirty minutes. And the streets were already flooded. You know, so.
Retention is the answer, and here's, here's what the kind of the thing that annoys me is that we had. Over a billion dollars, that we were gonna have up to four billion dollars, and the city sat on it for two years. Think about this, we actually had the funding and we did nothing for two years. If I wa- if I represented you. And I said on your money for two years, you'd complain to the bar, and I'd get a bar complaint, I'd get a bar complaint. We can't, there's, we don't have that option with the city, we can't go complain and we can't get a, a complaint against them. They, and you hear excuses and that's fine and dandy, but two years later, you gotta, you gotta do something. The city has to do something with the money that it's sitting on. I think now that the state, since we sat on it for two freaking years, the state said clearly we don't have any incentive and they're gonna do it themselves, which. Don't get me started on the state, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying the state's doing a good job, there's just as much corruption with the state, if you're the governor and you have forty million dollars sitting in your. In your bank account. I, where, how many, how many, how many kickbacks did that take to get forty million dollars? Because there's corruption exists, don't get me wrong, corruption exists in both parties. It exists blatantly, it exists especially with the, the governor. He's done a lot of shady things, so as the um, the lieutenant governor, and especially, especially has um. What, what, what's more, what's more crazy is the things that are going on with Ken Paxton. I say that cuz he's currently under indictment. Did you know he's currently under indictment? It's been going on for four, for, no, for, ever since he got, ever since he got elected. And this is stuff, and I'm, uh, the stuff with the, with Rick Perry. That kinda was like malarkey, I, I kinda, I kinda thought that was kinda hogwash. The stuff with um, oh, Kendal A, that one was a little bit better, but still not that good. But the stuff with Ken Paxton, that's legit. So what happened with Paxton is that uh, the allegations are that he um, he was uh, selling securities without a license. Which either you're doing it or not. And instead of actually fighting it on the merits, what he's done is he's attacked the DA. And uh, trying to prevent the DA from getting paid. Think about that from a defense standpoint, if you get indicted, if you're having to defend a case, you can't prevent a DA from getting paid. Only, only this situation with the Attorney General, his whole defense of the case is, the DA doesn't get money. Because of some loophole, that's his defense. I call, I call BS, cuz that's just straight up BS, if you're an elected official, you should at least be. The same level of accountability as everybody else.
Should be, yes.
You, at least, at least close, right? At least close, give, give me, give me the illusion, at least, at least give up, give me the illusion, give me the illusion. At least give me the illusion, the fact that he's sitting on indictment, and at the whole, his whole defense is they shouldn't, they, they shouldn't get paid. Ridiculous. So my point is this corruption, there, there's everywhere.
I have a question, uh, from Mr. Wonder Doctor, she said, what was their excuse for moving so slow? With uh, spending the money to benefit our city, what happened, why did they move so slow on it? Did they give an excuse?
They, they've given multiple excuses, but they, what they were able to do successfully is give him seven million dollars to the mayor's uh, former law partner. They were successful to do that.
Very successful.
They were successful in doing that, right? That has no experience in actually practicing uh, any type of hurricane law or anything like that.
I think they've only done like ten people, they've only helped like ten people.
I don't think it's that many, is it?
Add a, and.
I don't think it, uh, there's been allegations that, there's been, it's been alleged that they helped. Uh, up to fifteen people, it's, that's what the, the allegations said, it, it is alleged, I think it's more like five.
Yeah, cuz it was a lady that was at uh, City Hall, I think, at the last meeting, and she was getting on Mayor Turner. And said she had, only three houses were uh, really had any help and. She had applied long ago and no one never got back to her and, and never come back to her. So, I mean, if we already have the money, why not put it to use for the citizens and the community, I mean.
You know what, I could, and I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt for a second. I'm gonna give them, I'm gonna give them two benefits of the doubt.
Okay.
Why didn't they at least use the money for um, for uh.
Repairs or whatever.
Not, not repairs, for retention, right? I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, okay, they decided they're gonna do big picture type of stuff, not, not help people get made whole, which I think that's wrong, but still. I'm, I'm gonna give, again, I'm giving them two benefits of the doubt.
Okay.
Why didn't they use the money for at least more retention? So whether we have, we, if there was a flood, next time it wouldn't hurt so bad, because we had more places. So whether we have, we, if there was a flood, next time it wouldn't hurt so bad because we had more places for the water to go.
Okay.
They chose to do nothing. They chose to just sit on the money, and they're giving excuses for it, saying that they didn't, uh, there's, there's a procedure that they needed to go through, and they couldn't go through the procedure until certain things were set up. I respectfully disagree. I think that the mayor could have at least worked on it from the day one, could have worked on it, could have at least tried to do something. To me, it seems like if you're sitting on money for two years, you're at least hoping that people aren't gonna, aren't gonna remember that you had the money, and you wanna spend it for something else. And I, I might be being negative, but come on, it's been two years, you, you, you only helped fifteen people, come on, come on.
That's a long time. And we already had the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they.
We, we have one billion and we're supposed to be getting up to another four. Which is a lot of money.
That's a lot.
At least it. Again, at least, at least, at least they could have started some type of retention bonds, at least they could, at least, at least they could have done that, if they would have done that. That'd be good, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be upset about it. But there's a lot of reasons to be upset, whether you're Republican, whether you're Democrat, whether you're Independent. And you gotta, you gotta just go down to, we, huh, we can't just let our politicians treat us like this. We can't just let them take money and not do anything about it, we can't just let them, you know, uh, give money to their lawmakers, those seven million dollars, and they don't help, they don't help anybody except themselves. There's too much corruption, we gotta stop the corruption, cause you may tell you why we gotta stop the corruption, we got too many important things to do.
True.
Way too many important things to do, we gotta help, at least try to help the homeless.
Yes.
There's too many people sitting in tents, and we don't do, you know what our answer is, our solution is, don't give them nothing.
Yes.
You can't feed them, you can't do anything, and that drives me nutty.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You may tell you why it drives me nutty, cause at least we should let people give them food.
Yes, yes.
At lea- at least.
A meal.
At lea- if you want, if you wanna give a homeless person a burger, God bless you.
Yeah.
If you wanna give them bottled water, God, you should wanna do it, God bless you.
Water, water, yes.
Every time, instead of uh, the city trying to bring people together and to help, it pushes people away, that's the way it feels, and I think that's wrong, I think that needs to be changed.
Right.
Um, so we broke the law, uh, I'm gonna say we, but Real Talk One Hundred Radio broke the law.
Yesterday.
Uh, yesterday, cause they were handing out food to, they had like four hundred.
Yes.
Four hundred homeless people, I had to take a mental day, and so yesterday was my mental day off, and I was just, I just had to take one day off to myself and um decompose.
Yes.
But they did do amazing stuff and donate, like you were saying, it's illegal right now to donate, to get, to, to provide food for the homeless.
Right, right.
It's wrong.
To give everything, you know, that's something that a basic necessity that they need to eat.
Yes.
It's, it's currently illegal, and if, they could arrest you and take you to jail, what they did yesterday, you know?
Nah, I don't know, they are money.
If, if someone does get arrested, I'm happy to represent them for free, I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been begging, I, I filed two lawsuits on that same exact issue.
Okay. I would get your code.
Exact same issue, I filed two lawsuits. I'd beg, if, if they, if, if someone's listening and they've gotten a ticket for feeding the homeless, I'm happy to represent you free of charge.
I'll get your code.
In fact, by the time I'm done, the city's probably gonna pay you, that issue, that issue does not make me very happy.
I. And I can feed more people, cause yesterday, cause we know normally uh, the different organizations are closed on Sunday, so they don't usually get a meal coming to that Monday. So, we fed them a full meal, you had a meat, two vegetables. And they swallowed it so fast and they were right back in the line, because some of them say they hadn't eaten since like Friday. You know, they might had a little war, and it's Sunday, so they were waiting to Monday, so we had enough to give them, you know, extra food, and then there was somebody else that came with water.
Not Sunday.
Uh, chips and snacks and stuff like that, but I didn't know that just by out there actually getting among them, talking to them, not afraid of them, cause a lot of people are afraid of them, so. They were very, very nice, and you know, they were telling us the story, that they were very happy that we were there because they were so hungry.
God bless you.
Cause as soon as we were putting the food on there, they was, was taking it down, so I knew that there was a need, but we kept watching like, okay, are they gonna come arrest us? Okay, what's gonna happen, but we couldn't, I mean, we should have been more focused on the, the people, and not only that, they had kids, I, I know.
You shouldn't have that fear.
Yeah.
And then we trying to watch the kids, and I think that's the, the most thing is like an adult, you know, those, we have choices, but children, you don't have choices, you know? And it breaks my heart to see a, a homeless child with no food, and all of this money we have here in this state and in this country, you know? Nobody should be laying on the streets, nobody should have to wait from Friday to Monday just to get a meal.
At the bare minimum, at the, just let, let's, let's just go to the very, 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 very bare.
Yes. Very, 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 very bare.
At least people that wanna help shouldn't be.
Criminalized.
Shouldn't be penalized by the city.
Right, right, that's why we kept watching, okay, are they coming, are they coming?
At, at, at the very, 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 very bare, I, I agree with you that people shouldn't be homeless, I agree with you on that.
Yes, yes.
But if, if, if it's an issue of funding, I'm sure that's, that's a discussion, but an issue that's not an issue of funding is whenever individuals wanna give, wanna use their own money.
Yeah.
Yes.
Their own money.
Donations, yes.
Why is the city getting in their way, why is the city fighting with them on that, it shouldn't, what the city should be doing, you should have our elected officials going along with it.
Right.
Saying this is the humanitarian thing to do. You know, you're hungry, if this community wants to give them food, let them, let them, because, okay, let's go over all the issues, one of them is, okay, litter.
Right.
There's existing laws for litter, you leave a mess, you can get fined, there's litter laws.
Right. Right. But they were helping us pick up everything, we bought all the trash, you know, trash bags, everybody was picking up stuff, so we left nothing, we cleaned up everything, and they were helping uh.
So.
To make sure, we know that was one of the things, but like you say, we shouldn't be fearful that we're going to get arrested, nor we have no bail money, you know, to get out, only because we're trying to help people. And I just think, you know, we do it all the time, just praying and hoping, you know, we're gonna be alright because we're helping someone, you know, and. And God will always protect us, and you know, so far we haven't gotten arrested, you know, and a lot of them don't have clothes, they didn't have shoes, and. If you really go down there, and that's what I think a lot of the politicians, do you actually go down there and listen to their stories and find out why this person is there? It could be drugs, it become getting out of pills, and it could be mental illness, but like I was talking to, uh, it was a, I guess she was a registered nurse. And like we were talking, all of us could be just one paycheck away from being in this line, but why don't people understand that?
Yeah.
I wanted to know, do the politicians actually go down there, cause I haven't seen any, they may do, and actually talk to the people and find out, you know, what is it we can help you with, what is it that you need? And I think if they would talk, let's at least go down there and see how you can rectify the problem.
I agree, I think, I think that's one step, yes.
Yes.
Going, and the treasurer of my campaign, who's actually a very big Democrat.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jay Hamburger, he's also known as the Eggman, and the egg, the reason he's called the Eggman is uh, he was known throughout the city for giving homeless people eggs.
Okay. Oh, okay.
And it, he boils them and gives them out individually, um, because an egg has like a, a shell.
Yeah.
A lot of protein.
Yeah, it's protein, and that's what he's known in the homeless community for doing.
Okay.
So the, the feeding the homeless issue is very, very important to me, and I just think it's, I think it's wrong whenever the city kinda gets in the way of that. And I think um, we need to be a, we need to be a kinder city, we need to be the city that tries to help each other, whether it's AIDS testing.
Yes. Yes.
Whether it's uh HIV test, HIV testing, whether, I mean, I'm, you know.
Yeah.
We learn it.
I'm learning, whether, whether it's, whether it's um, with our stray animals, you know, making the city, make the city a no-kill city.
I'm learning too. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
You know, maybe, maybe our politicians should be talking about maybe spating and neutering our animals, and pushing that stuff, telling people that.
I agree, I agree.
Yes.
Also, we need to be at, the bigger, that, I really like that uh, the, the medication that prevents people from spreading HIV.
Yes.
That, that, that's, yeah, that needs to be pushed hard.
It is.
Because if, we need, one, we need to educate our community that it exists, and the city needs to figure out a way where it's at least affordable, or it's a nominal cost.
Um, that's my other, so wh- while we're still talking about the homeless community, I wanna talk about homeless and HIV. And being homeless and HIV is a whole situation, because you have to take, I have to take my medication every day at the same time, I have to take it with food.
Yes.
Please.
I have to take it with food, I, I, it can't be an hour late, it can't be, I eat food uh two days before, I have to eat.
You got food on Friday, you won't have none till Monday.
No, I have to eat food at nine, uh, eight forty-five, and I have to take my medication by nine PM. That's every day, that's every, every single time, if I don't do that, then the medication is really not effective.
That's a problem. That's not gonna work.
And so when we wanna get our, our homeless community under um, undetectable status, how can we get them to be undetectable? If one, they don't have a safe place for their medication.
True.
Two, they don't know if they're gonna have a meal when they're gonna take their medication.
A meal.
And if they have a meal, will they have a, be able to get a drink, so you have to be able to, so let's say, you can get a medication that doesn't require you to have. Uh, like a meal or have food in your system, so you can get something that maybe doesn't require, but you still have to take, you know, um, some kinda drink or something, a bottle of water.
Something about water.
But eh, a homeless person doesn't know where to keep their medication, so their medication ha- it can't be in a hundred degree temperatures out there. And what if it's stolen, where would you be able to get your medication from then again, and so if you leave your place, if you leave your medication at, at your tent, which is your home?
Yes.
And then you come back and you don't have your medication because somebody came and raided your stuff, you know?
A drug raid?
There's no safe, so would you, you, would you consider um, something similar that Austin's doing? They have actual um, lockers for homeless people that they can go to, several lockers around the city.
Hmm.
That they can go to, they can put their medication, their valuables, whatever valuables that they may have, they can put them there, they have a, a safe place to keep their stuff. And that way people are not stealing their things, you know, yes, and they have a place to shower, they have a place that they can exchange um.
Needles.
A safe, 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 yeah, safe.
Needles.
Needle, syringe, exchange program, you know, and those are stuff that Austin's doing, but we are not doing in Houston, and yet we are the most diverse city. We're the number third city and, and you know, number four city in, in the county, in the country. But yet we can't even offer simple programs for our homeless population.
And we, what we do more than that is we get in the way of organizations that try to help. There's uh, with Joel Dolison, and he has, he works in an organization where they make tiny homes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
What's really cool is he takes campaign signs and he turns them into shingles for these small homes. So every time someone has a campaign sign and they leave it out, he goes and picks them up and he uses it for siding, and also for shingles for those little homes.
Like recycling.
And what the, what happens with the, the city gets in their way, the city like messes with them all the time, he's always complaining about it.
Yes.
How can we be, we're supposed to be the friendliest city around, are we not?
Right, right, right.
We're Houston.
Yeah.
How can we be a friendly city whenever people that are trying to help each other were getting in the way? Um, yes, if we're, if we're providing uh, and I don't, I don't even think it would cost much to have some type of lockers or safe space. But I think we should also work together with the other, with peo- anybody out in the community that wants to help. The city is foolish to think it can take it on itself, in fact, it's not, it, foolish is probably a nice, I'm gonna say foolish, cause I'm gonna be nice.
Yeah.
The city is foolish, foolish.
We are, we, we are Real Talk One Hundred, so you can say whatever you want.
I know, I know.
We can be real here on the show.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to be the bigger person, I, I'm being the bigger person for myself, not, not get others.
Yes.
Anybody can get ugly, it's easy to get ugly.
It's better to stay nice.
I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay cordial and nice, I, but I.
You try it.
I just, man, why, why can't we actually try to help? Why, why is it, why are we like getting in the way, whether it's uh, feeding the homeless, whether it's the housing?
Yeah.
Why aren't we actually trying to incorporate them in? Why aren't we trying, why say, or at least trying to assist them? Why can't we have uh, the mayor, city council members, or people running, why can't we have advocates for the people? People that you could, and don't get me wrong, you can dislike them up and down, but at the end of the day, you're like, well, he does clearly care, he's out, he's out there, he's trying.
Yeah. Talking to.
It'll, 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 or at least trying, trying to do something, trying, trying to help the homeless population. I don't expect, I don't expect us to, to, you know, make giant progress in a year, but at least trying.
Right, right.
Cause right now, the solution is you just put out signs that say you don't, you don't have to feed the homeless, that's the solution, and I don't, I don't like that solution. I, and I think we should, we should, you see so many people.
Well, there's a sign up of um, Westheimer, um, sorry, it's six ten and Westheimer, that says meaningful change, don't, spare change, don't, don't give. Change, give meaningful change.
It's. Yes, yes, I've seen that.
Um, and to me, that's horrible, because no, they need, why don't you say, give the, it's okay to give change, but also, you know, do something else as well too.
Right.
But for you to say, don't give change to these people, is a different backwards than give meaningful, meaningful change, what does meaningful change really mean?
Any change is meaningful, anything, a bottle of water is meaningful, any, they need everything.
Yes. It's meaningful, yes.
Yes.
They need everything.
A sandwich is meaningful.
Any, eh, any and every, a penny's meaningful sometimes, whenever you haven't had nothing, whenever you're sitting on the side of the road with a sign.
Yes, yes, yes.
And whenever you're living in ti- in a tent on the side of the freeway.
Yeah.
And have you, if you drive down I ten and you look on all the trees.
Yes.
You'll see tents hidden up in there.
In the trees.
In the trees.
I forty-five, I mean, all over downtown, the Pierce elevator.
Yeah.
We choose to ignore it. We choose to ignore it.
You know, it's, it, it really is everywhere, but um, let me go off, go ahead.
Look the other way. Let me ask you my, that, another question that we um, we talked about with the homeless with this uh, I don't follow sport, but the Astros won, and you know, everybody coming in, and you know how they wanna push the homeless. Out the way.
Yeah.
And they're fearful that, I guess, I don't know how it work, I guess if, we go to the, I almost say it's Super Bowl, whatever.
World Series. World Series, which starts Tuesday.
Right, so if they come here, and you know how they wanna clean up the city and make it beautiful, they're fearing that they will come back, take all of their tents, take all of their stuff.
Yeah.
And just move them to the other side, that's the biggest thing that I was hearing yesterday, that they know they had won, so.
Like it did. Yes.
This like, they already fearful like, they're finna come and just take everything, what am I supposed to do if I'm a single mom out there and I have my kids? You know, what am I supposed to do, so you just gonna come and take my son's little teddy bear, that's all he have, you don't care, you just gonna wish our stuff away? You know, I'm just, I, I know you wanna make the city look good, but at least put the people in a temporary place or do something, this don't come, I don't understand why you gotta come in and clean up the whole thing, take all of their tent. Take all of their belongings and discard them.
Just because we won the World Series, or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it happened, it happened the last time that we won the World Series.
Yeah, so they already know what's getting ready to happen, so it's like, okay, in the next few days or whenever it's gonna happen, we're not gonna have anything, no tent, no clothes, nothing.
Yes, yeah.
So what little I do have, uh, in those tents, when you get them, okay, well, where I'm gonna find my next tent? Where I'm, like you say, what if they come in and my medication is in there? What if you come in and I have a child and that's their only toy that they have? I'm just talking about, like we said, meaningful, just basic things, that, that child is looking for their teddy bear when they come back, and there's no tent there, nothing. Mom, where are we gonna sleep, mom, what are we gonna do, what is she supposed to tell them?
It's wonderful.
Yeah.
Man, it's taken, thinking, it's, it's basically, you've taken the little bit that the poor has.
Yeah.
And like, that, that's all they got is their tent.
That's it.
And that's, that's, I mean, that's all they got, and they don't have the means to get another tent, how are they gonna find another one?
Yeah.
And it's, it, it's a bigger problem.
Is that legal?
At, at the moment.
Not, not, well, not, it's still, I think it's a government taking, no, it's a government taking, that'd be a due process government taking, but I don't, that becomes a difficult.
A loophole or?
That'd be a due process government taking, but I don't, that becomes a difficult.
Just to make the city look good, right there where the, what is it, Toyota Center is, so we wanna just make sure this is beautiful, so we just gonna throw y'all all away like a piece of trash?
It's a bigger issue, when I say it's a bigger issue, I think what, you know, the city council members should do, what the mayor should do, is try to get everybody in the community.
Okay. Uh huh.
They say, hey, we've got a problem, who wants to help? How can you help?
How can you help?
That would be the first, the, there's always gonna be a limit on money.
There's always a solution.
At least, at least there's, at least, at least we can try towards a solution.
Right, right.
And I think trying towards a solution would be to incorporate everybody, figure out how they can help, realize you cannot do it all yourself.
Right, right.
So how can we help the poor people? How can we help the people that are living in tents? I think we could, we could at least try with, uh, like I said about Joe Dolison, who's uh has uh, you know, s- small homes.
Home, yeah.
I think there's other organizations that do the same thing. So what the city should be doing is working with all organizations, regardless of faith, regardless of any of that.
I agree.
Regardless, just if you wanna help, the city should be working with you, the city shouldn't be in your way, the should, city should say, thank you, actually, the prob- they should proclaim a day after you.
Right.
The fact that you wanna help, especially that much, that's the things the city should be doing.
Right, and it's not costing them anything.
That's right, eh eh well, the only, the only thing that it would cost the city is having a, like a person to try to organize it.
Right, just one set, well, if you could pay somebody ninety-five thousand dollars.
For you can file an intern, you can, you can, you can pay an intern, in fact, you probably, to be, to be fair, if you were really witty on it, you probably could just, you probably have volunteers.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they would love to help.
At least.
I mean, contact pause impact, we'll volunteer.
Yeah, Shiny Star Academy, we are, we are volunteer, Real Top One Hundred, all of us are pro volunteer.
Yes. Can we, I wanna move a little bit, we have a lot of topics, and the homelessness is a, is a big topic, but I wanna move on to a little bit different, so, let, can we talk about H F D? Um, right now, yes, yeah, the the Houston Fire Department.
Oh, firefighters, yeah, I love that one, and they actually endorse me, they did endorse me.
Yeah, yes. Alright, woo.
Oh, did they? Awesome, so, I'm, I'm a huge H F D property fan.
They did.
Yes.
Um, I've read about them for, I've 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 educated myself on.
Yes.
On the pro- the what the what happened, and I just find it appalling that they are being paid what they're currently being paid.
Their issues.
I have a lot of friends who are H F D, and it's not only that they're my friends, I, like any issue, I I'm like. Okay, I wanna know what the real story is behind all of this, and I just think that they got a, the raw end of the deal, and our current administration, the mayor. Doesn't want, it has like some kind of been dead up against them, and I'm not sure why, but at the same time, I know that we have to help them. And I know that if we elect the current, like our current leaders or city office, so, you know, my question for you is, if, let's say that currently Mayor Turner doesn't get elected again, you get elected. How will you, um, make sure that our H F D are taken care of, you know, making sure that there are, the mayor doesn't stonewall them, that the mayor doesn't making sure they don't put on a back burner. And get this horrible deal, I mean, the, that our city council currently approved to lay them off, and I was like. You voted to, all these people voted to lay H F D off, do they know what H F D does? Do they know that they come to your home when you have a heart attack, do they know that they come to your house when you have a fire? Do they know that you come to the house when you have a medical problem? Like, this is our H F D currently, and then they're like, oh, well, we can privatize them, we can send, we can do all this other stuff. Um, I have food, yes, please eat.
No, I'm okay, I'm.
You know, we eat up here.
Um, you know, so so how.
Looks like, looks good, it's fried rice.
Uh huh, you want some?
Yes.
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
From beneath, from, um, shout out to, um.
Uh.
I don't know what this is.
Uh, I think, uh.
I ate papasitos before I came.
Chimichangas, that's, that's the thing, what was it?
Chimichangas, yes. But, you know, like, how can we make sure that, you know, that they get a fair deal, because during, that what the mayor proposed is not a fair deal, and I know at the moment, it's it's ruled uncon- unconstitutional. But this is just one judge, and it's still, they've appealed, and so we're just waiting for the court system, and I know that the court will say, okay, the voters approved this. So you really can't be uncon- unconstitutional if the voters approved, so you have to work out some kinda legal, some kinda, some kinda agreement with them, but the mayor is like, no, you're gonna get zero dollars, wow. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put H uh H P D on blast, they just got a two million dollar raise, while H F D got zero for dollars, and they're still working off of. Uh, two thousand and twelve agreement, they're like eight years behind on getting any kinda raise. You know, so what can you do with city council if we have the same mayor that doesn't wanna negotiate with them? So as city council at large, five, what can you do to help our firefighters?
Okay, so first I'd say, um, my dad is retired firefighter.
Okay, so this is close to you.
So, um, yeah, it's very, it's, what happened to the firefighters is personal to me, it's very personal to me, I don't, I don't particularly like anybody treating.
Okay.
Our public safety the way our current mayor has, and I'm not gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote for Turner, I, I'm just be clear on that, I'm not gonna vote for Turner.
I'm either.
And so if people are upset with how the mayor has treated the firefighters, I encourage them not to vote for him, there's no reason to vote for him. And I know some people feel strongly about voting for him, fine, but I'm what, it's clear that there's a problem between the mayor and firefighters, I just don't think that's right.
Yes.
And here's why I don't think it's right, because all of us, whether you're in the rich community, whether you're in the poor community, whether you're in whatever community. We all rely on public safety, we all rely on public safety, we all rely on firefighters.
No, I'm gonna repeat that again. Yes.
If my house burns up, and I'm gonna cry just as loud if your house burns up.
Yes. Yes, yes.
If I have a stroke, I'm begging for the firefighters to come and get me.
Yes.
And I'm telling you what, I would never run in a burning building, but the fact that they do, God bless them, they are brave.
Yeah.
They are, they are our bravest, and we shouldn't be finding ways to help them.
I mean, they risk their lives every day.
They risk their lives in a lot of different ways.
And that we have no clue about.
Well, and I've heard stories, I've heard a lot of stories about the fire department, what it was like, and what it's like now, and all the type of stuff they have to see. Whenever you start off in the fire department, you make twenty-seven thousand dollars as a cadet, that's, that's practically nothing.
Nothing, that's.
Some, some, some cadets, no joke, are in the welfare line.
That is nothing.
Yeah.
So there, you should not, you should not be, if you're a firefighter, you shouldn't be in the welfare line, they can't even afford to live in the city. I mean, it's, it's, we gotta do better, I mean, we really gotta do better, we gotta take care of our, our, our police officers, we gotta especially take care of our firefighters. And the fact that our firefighters and police officers are fighting, that's, that's wrong, that's, it's really bad, it's dangerous too.
I mean, they they picked, they picked the fight because they joined the mayor, you know, so they, they're, they, you know, or the, the union did, you know, their union picked the fight, so now, I'm. I have no pity for H P D at the moment, and I'm, so, you know, so again, my question is, you know, as city council, and if, should we have the same mayor currently? Um, as elect, as the, that's elected at the moment, so how, how?
I wouldn't vote, I wouldn't, I would, I I'll vote for the current mayor, I I've been clear.
Yeah, I I know, but you wouldn't vote, but so, if if you are elected.
So. Yes, I understand that requirement.
And we currently have the mayor that's elected, how as as city council, will you make sure that our H F D are treated fairly?
So, there, oh, there's a few things there, first, you gotta realize you're only one voice of about fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah.
So you're only one voice, I could be a very loud voice, I could be an obnoxious voice, I could be a nice voice if necessary. So there's, there's why I could be, you know, upfront, incanted about it and loud about it, and I'm good at being loud when necessary, and I sue insurance companies for a living. I fight, you know, uh, Goliath with uh sometimes not even a sling like Ga- David would have, I'm happy if I have to fight a mayor and jump up a damn, have a big fit, I'll have a big fit. And I'll call him names and I'll, I'm, you know, I'll call him, you know, I'll, I'll be, I'll be kind of aggressive with it, you know, why are you, why are you treating the firefighters bad? You know, what, 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 why are you being mean to people, what, why, I mean, you gotta call them out, you gotta, people's gotta be accountable for it, nobody. Look, people voted, people voted, we had a decision.
Yeah.
Honor the decision, don't find ways to get out of stuff, you can find, you can find money to pay, to pay in terms.
Yes. Yeah, you can.
You can find money to pay your law firm.
Okay.
Take, take care, take care of the firefighters, take care of it, there's no reason not to, take care of it.
Um, what about legalizing weed?
I'm for, I'm for legalizing.
Or marijuana, so, the current district attorney, you know, she's for decriminalizing it, which is not the same as legalizing it, you know, she wants to. And there's currently, it's a per- it's a, it's a step, but we, I feel like Houston should go further, so, you know, the currently.
I agree.
Uh, if you get caught with with marijuana, um, the officer can give you a ticket, and the ticket you have, you can pay like, I think it's like a hundred and fifty dollars to take a class. And it will be dismissed, but if you don't do the class, um, you, you get a charge against you, you'd get like, um.
Misdemeanor charge, yeah.
A misdemeanor charge, and you have to go to jail, I mean, you have to go, a, 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 to a judge and, you know, go to court and all that kind of stuff if you don't do the class.
You don't have to jail. Mm-hmm.
Or if you missed the class, um, what, um, Audia, as who's running for district attorney.
Mm-hmm.
She wants to actually decriminalize the entire process of marijuana, making sure that if you are caught with marijuana, there is no charges, I know that's more of a D A. But also, um, city council.
It's also the city, well, it's the city itself.
Can do, can say, hey, you know what, we want to pass marijuana, we're, we're not, we're gonna make this, um, decriminalize it completely. And that way, the D A really has no power, if the city passes, if the mayor is like, okay, we're gonna go, we're, we're gonna force this issue, cause it really doesn't really affect the community. It really only affects people who get arrested, and as we can. Officers have not been truthful, and they're arresting people, planting drugs or falsifying things. I mean, we know what happened with the raid at, um, those two people got killed with their dog over false information, completely.
Yes.
That's wrong, that's wrong.
Off of a, a police officer's sworn statement, you know, so if we can decriminalize, um, marijuana, that's a first step to making sure that that doesn't happen again. You know, so as city council, what is your view on that, or, you know, of, uh, you know, decriminalizing marijuana and making sure that it's. It's a, you know, maybe not available, but at the same time, you're not gonna be prosecuted for having, if you're not a drug dealer, if you don't have. Nobody should have five ounces of of marijuana, if you have five ounces, ten ounces of marijuana, then, you know, maybe in your car. Then you're dealing, and you're possibly, you know, you sh- you shouldn't have that, but if you have an ounce or four ounces, you know, four ounces or less. Um, that's a normal average user, four ounces is a lot, you know, one ounce is a lot, but.
Depends on what kind of pot it is too.
Uh, the, true, but, you know, I'm just saying, like, you know, specific, you know, for in general, um. I wanna make sure that this is not affected to the wrong people, because we do know that black and brown people are more often stopped. The eh for these stupid charges, and all of a sudden, um, we saw, we just saw an officer was repeating, was, um. Does, he stopped this guy from, for having, um, air freshener on his car.
Air freshener.
And was like, hey, it's okay if you have a joint in your car, you can tell me, no, I don't smoke, no, no, really, it is okay if you tell me you have a joint, do you mind if I search your car? No, yes, I do mind if you search my car, what, you know, like, why, why do you pull me over, because I had this little air freshener on. On my windshield, I mean, on my, um, rear rear mirror, you know?
Right.
But, that's what I'm saying, like Houston, that can't happen in Houston, in Galveston, we just saw, you know, police officers arrested this African-American man, and. Oh, they mounted him, they were both police officers on, on, um, horses, with the news on him, you know, so, how can we, um.
With a noose on him, yeah. That was awful.
You know, it wasn't drugs related for him, but we do need, we do need to separate the millen- illness from drugs and from everything else, so.
Whatever illness.
You know, can you give me just a little bit of of what you could do, or what your, your thoughts about? Marijuana, you know, um, marijuana in general, decriminalizing it, or what you think you should, the city Houston should do?
Love to, first, I'd start off with, I started, I helped start the first public school in Harris County for drug usage.
Oh, wow, okay.
Fortis Academy, I started with the Harris County Department of Education, I, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I, I'm, I'm gonna show you where we could incorporate it in. Cause I actually, I agree with you about marijuana, people shouldn't be arrested for using marijuana, I think that's, I think that's only one part, I don't think people should be arrested for doing drugs.
Yes.
Let's, let's run with it, marijuana is a misdemeanor, I've defended those cases, keep in mind, I'm a plaintiff's attorney, if, if I am doing any criminal work, it's as a defense attorney. I say that because, okay, I've defended people for using cocaine, that's a felony.
Yes.
You get busted with a little bit of, just, oh, like a empty baggie of cocaine, that is a felony, your whole life is basically ruined. Either you gotta find ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars and hire an expensive lawyer to get you out of it, or, or.
More like fifty thousand dollars.
Or, or you get a felony record, and now you're, now you're, you have people, you have dumb, I'm like, okay, let's, let's run with this. Who is getting in trouble for drug usage? It's generally, some of it's dumb kids.
Black and brown people.
Yes.
It's black, it's a lot of people, it's, it's dumb kids, plenty of them are black, black and brown, plenty of them are Hispanic, the ones that are Caucasian are white.
Yeah.
Some of them, some of them have money to fight it, some of them don't.
Yeah.
Uh, the people that have money to fight it usually get out of it, the people that don't have money to fight it, now they get a felony record. And their whole life's ruined just for a little bit of blow, just for a little bit of drugs, let's be honest, the people that are using drugs, they have problems.
Yeah.
They have problems in life, they have problems with their self, they need help, what they do not need is a criminal record.
Yes.
Yes.
And here's the deal, I don't want to pay to put them in jail, I don't wanna pay for it, it's too expensive to house somebody for drug usage. I don't wanna pay for it, one, it's a waste of money, and then also, you give someone a criminal record for cocaine, pot, or whatever it is. You give them a L L S D, you give them a criminal record for L S D, a felony.
Yes.
So here's what I think the city should do, anytime someone's using drugs for personal usage, make them go to Fortis Academy. Make them go to some type of school, some type of help, these people need help, help them, not jail.
Jail.
What we don't need to do, we were also talking about jail, the fact that jail is the biggest place for mental illness, that makes me say all sorts of full-blown words.
Yes, yes.
Jump up and down and scream, that is, it's, it's horrible.
Yes. It's, it's, you are currently right.
Also, the state of Texas is number one in arresting people for marijuana, did you know that? We are number, we're number one for arresting people on marijuana, that drives me batty.
No, I just said that today, I was today.
Why are we spending so much money on these jails, so much money in all these, uh, uh, putting people in jail, when actually, can we do something positive? That's money wasted, it's money ruining people's lives, I mean, I think people that are trying to hurt people should be in jail. People that are trying to do wrong things should be in jail, but dumb kids, dumb people, for lack of better words.
Yes.
That just, that are doing drugs, either because they have problems.
Yeah.
They need help, we should help them, it's a much cheaper alternative, and also, it's a more humane and humanitarian issue.
Help. I agree.
Yes.
We should partner with Fortis Academy, not arrest anybody for personal drug usage, and make them go to Fortis Academy, make them get help. That's what I think, so I, I agree with you pretty strongly on that.
I see, I, you know, I, I didn't realize this, eh, um, this interview has been going great so far, um, when you first, um, talked to me, you were like, oh, I run more of a, uh, Republican. Slash independent, I was like, oh, I'm not sure how well the interview is really gonna go, but, um, you really share the same issues in it, and I, and I'm so happy that.
I'm an advocate.
You, you an advocate, you know, that's what you say, is that you're an advocate, it really doesn't matter, your political stance is that, at the end of the day, you wanna see people do better.
Yeah.
And you wanna see people, um, be better, you know, and so, how can we help them be better if we keep on arresting them?
Yes.
That's right.
How can we, we be better if we put in these laws for the, for the homeless community? How can we be better when we're not putting money for H I V education? How can we be better when we're not, um, decriminalizing drugs and arresting people for all this, um, nonsense stuff?
Wasting money, I mean, wasting money.
Wasting money, you know?
Making, making private jails rich, harder, harder hour.
Yes.
That's exactly what we're doing, yeah, um, so, what's your plan on the Green New Deal? We all know, um, climate change is real, I hope you are aware of that, and, um, I hope you agree with that, that climate change is real and that is effective. As we can see in Houston, that we've had, um, the last five years, we've had five hundred year floods, every year for the past five years. Which, I should, I don't think it should be still considered a five hundred year flood, if it happens every year or, you know, twice a year, you know, some cases. Um, you know, so how can we get not only the flooding problem, but, um. Renewable energy in Houston, Houston is currently, um, known as the, the oil and gas capital of the world, we're also the Mecca for healthcare.
Mm-hmm.
How can we combine them two, into. Being a better neighbor for each other, you know, so the, the oil industry can, can sync up with the healthcare industry? And they're like, okay, fracking is really not good for our environment, for he, for Texas, let's change it to more of renewable energy. So, as city council, how can you, um, get us into more renewable energy city versus just. An oil and gas capital of the world?
Okay, so I'm a plaintiff's lawyer first, I, I say that because I, what I see is, I see a really big injustice, um, I've represented about a hundred people with Arqima. I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's the explosion that happened as a result of Hurricane Harvey, where, uh, there's a chemical plant, it blew up.
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yes.
These big oil companies need to be accountable for their actions, I, they're, what's, what's despicable is, you heard me huffing and puffing about, uh, Ken Paxton. What he, so what happened with Arqima, when that happened, Ken Paxton sent out a little thing saying he's gonna sue them for tens of thousands of dollars. And I just sat there cracking up, these executives are sitting over at Treasures at some strip club, spinning that right there, and they're, they're so scared that they're gonna have to pay. Uh, the, the state-backed tens of thousands of dollars, whoop-de-doo. We, the, the big oil, the chemical plants, they need to be held accountable for their actions. With climate change, I wanna be honest, I'm a lawyer, I don't understand the science, but what I do understand is I hear scientists telling me that there's global warming's occurring. So I assume they're right, I mean, I, they, they, they know this stuff, I assume they're right, I'm listening to them, I assume they're right.
I mean, you're an attorney, we're scientists, they, we all go to school for our different.
Yeah.
That's right.
You know, our different, um, expertise, so, I expect the scientists to know what they're doing, and I expect the, an attorney to know what they're doing.
Expertise.
That's right. I do.
Yeah.
And I expect that they can come together.
Yes.
And agree that, yes, what you're saying makes, I, I may, I may not agree with it, or I may not understand it, but I do know that what you are saying is true.
It's true.
As the same way the scientist is gonna say. Are saying is true, as the same way the scientist is gonna say. Hey, if I need an attorney, I know that you're saying what you're telling me is true. You're not gonna say something that is not factual. That's not gonna help your client. Why would you say something that is not factual if it's not gonna help, right?
But I think, I think we could also, I think we can also take a step back. I say that because we could, we can all, can't we all agree that putting poison in the air is bad for us?
Yes.
Whether you agree with climate change or not, whether you, whether regardless of what you agree with. If, if you're putting bad stuff in the air, it can't, it, it, we know it can't be good. You know the result isn't gonna be good. I, if, if at least, at least we should all be able to agree to that. If you're, you're causing, you're causing uh our air quality. How about that fire that happened? Was it uh last year where the whole city turned black in the sky?
Yeah.
I can't we all, can't we all agree, can't we all agree that that probably was bad for us?
Yes, it was.
And it can't, and, and the fact, I think we have a lot of problems with the state. Is I think the, the Environmental Protection Agency is more of a protection agency for. Uh, oil companies and big business than it is individuals. And I think, again, I go back, there's too much corruption. There's way too much corruption. The corruption is what's causing us problems. The corruption is what's causing big business to get away with murder, to get away with poisoning us. They need to be accountable. And we need to be, we need to be honest about this type of stuff. We need to be honest if, you know, if, if, if the world is warming, which that's what the scientists say, we need to be honest about it. And we need to have real expectations of how to change it for green energy. You know, we need to have options. Um, we need to encourage people with solar panels, give incentives for solar panels. And here's the thing that's even cooler with the solar panels, they need to be able to transfer their energy back. To uh, you know, whatever the energy companies or stuff like that. Cause right now, the way I understand it. Is um, if you have solar panels in your home and you go, you bring in more energy than you uh use. You can't do anything with it. You have to store it or you don't get to use it. We, that should, we should require, at least in the city, should try to require that to either go back or, you know, something to do with that. What we want really, again, it's the same thing that I go back to. We wanna activate the community, get the community involved. Think about it. What if there's, what, I, let's just run with it. Let's say everybody had solar panels and we brought in more energy. Through solar panels and we, we didn't need the energy companies, we didn't need the energy plants. Because we brought in more from our solar panels. I'm not saying that it would happen, but at least saying we should at least try. At least try, at least give it a shot, at le- at least try, see what we can do. It's just too much no. It's too much, you can't do this. It's too much, you know, government getting in our way. Instead of try to encourage and push the right thing. It's too much, um, pick which gang you're in. Are you a Republican or are you a Democrat? That's what we need to stop. Ex, at, at least, at least in the municipality level. At least at the very smallest level, we need to, we need to, you know, forget party, pick issues, focus on issues.
Yes.
Um, wow, that's, that's so interesting, that's so true, you know, and, and I wouldn't. See, I, I don't, I, I classify myself as a, as a Democrat just because I agree with most, with what most Democrats. I have to say, I'm more of a liberal person because I really believe that we should have like Medicare for All and we should have. All these socialist of a Bernie fan. Um, but doesn't mean that I won't agree with, you know, like with you, with your, what you're saying is completely true and I. And I wish that more people would separate the bipartisan issue and just say, hey, this is what I'm standing for. This is what my, my beliefs are. It doesn't matter whether I'm Republican or from Democrat, from an independent. Is that these are the issues that I'm, I'm running for and that I believe in. And this is what I wanna change, just like what you're telling me today.
I'm a centrist by the way.
I, I love that.
I'm, I'm a centrist. I have very strong, not a moderate, I'm a centrist. I have very strong feelings from both sides of the party. From the Republican side and the Democrat side.
I can, I can agree with that, you know, I, I'm more of a, of a left and I want extreme left. You know, but I can be moderate and accept what I, what I have and I, and go forward. But what I can't accept is somebody says who denying climate change. Denying what we're having currently an issue, whether you're Republican or you're Democrat. I, I, what I can agree is if you deny that we currently have an issue with the climate change or we have an issue with homelessness. Or that we have an issue with HIV, you know, that's what I can't.
If you're honest and you have a real conversation, you can, you can come to solutions, you can agree on stuff. The problem with too many politicians, whether they're Republican, whether they're Democrat, is they lie. That's the problem. They aren't being honest. If you're honest, you'd be surprised. You could, you can agree with stuff. You could, you can concede. If you're honest. Whenever you're hiding what you're really doing, because you're putting money in your pocket, because you're getting rich on these issues, whether, whatever issue it is. You're getting rich on it, that's wrong. It's, it's, it's wrong. Because you're, people should go into government because they wanna help. They really should. I'm going into, oh, I am elected as a trustee because I wanted to help people. And again, I, I told you from the beginning, I started off thinking I wanted to get rid of it, cause that's what everyone told me. And then I went in there. I looked, I learned, and I was shocked because I was wrong. And plenty of people were mad at me because I changed my mind. And then when I told them, it's they were wrong. Why would you wanna get rid of something that's actually helping people? Everything you guys told me, you were lying to me. You were telling me that it wasn't like this. So what I've learned is both parties lie.
No, I agree. Uh, so you're currently a board of uh trustees for H, H, H I S D, right?
No, H C D, Harris County, Harris County, so if you want a history lesson in, in uh, in uh, education. Uh, before, before independent school districts, there were common school districts. This is in the seventies.
Okay.
The common school districts uh were managed by the counties.
H C D, okay.
And this is the last common school district of the state of Texas, which is Harris County Department of Education.
Where is it at?
It is off of Irvington.
Irvington, Little Mullet.
Okay, let's see, I'm learning something new today. And you know, can I ask you what's your stance on H, um, on H, H I S D? Right now, the board, um, I know.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about it all you want. I think, I think that's.
The state is trying to take over our, over our, our, um. Our um school district, which I, I don't know if I, I agree or if I disagree. Because I think that we do need some kind of reform. I just don't know what reform we need. So you've been in this situation, you've been in this kind of situation before. Can you give me your respective of what we should do regarding H I S D?
I'd love to. So first thing I'd note is, um, initially I was against the state taking it over. I thought it was, I thought it was a mistake mainly because why would someone wanna get like blood like that in their hands? And I am, I'm, I question the motives. I'm not gonna deny that. There's, there's plenty of reason to question the motives. But here's my, like, my, my, maybe my anger, is that the department, uh, H I S D, they lost a hundred and twenty million dollars. Did you realize that?
No, on what?
So what happened is, I think it was about maybe ten years ago, there was a bond for a hundred and twenty million dollars. They split it up. Read the report. There's a report done by an independent investigator. And they basically trustees split up that hundred and twenty million dollars and they just kind of blew it over the course of ten years. So the fact that, I, they made a hundred and twenty million dollars disappear. And that, that, I'm. I'm kinda angry about that. And the reason I'm so angry about that, I went to public school, I went to H I S D. And a hundred and twenty million dollars could do a lot of things. Could help a lot, uh, could help. Pick, pick, pick what, either kids, either teachers, pick something. It could, it could, it could, it could do something. Break up H I S D. Break it up. It's too big. It's too big, it houses too much corruption. Why are people raising a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars to get elected to a position you don't get paid for?
Hmm.
And why? But you don't me tell you why?
Tell me.
Cause they're getting kickbacks with the contracts, they're steering contracts. That's what's happening.
Uh, what, when you say contracts, I mean, I'm, I'm new to all of this, so can you really break it down for me on what kind of contracts? You know, what, what contracts does? Oh, I'm, maybe, I mean, you know all this stuff, so feel free to jump in too. This is, this is your expertise, I.
No, that's the expert I'm, I'm, I'm learning too. Yeah, there's always kickbacks you can get.
For what? Like what kind?
Or if you buy my books, I'll kick you back ten thousand dollars. If you go with my nutrition program. To put my food or my vending machines in your school, I'll pay you X, Y, Z or whatever.
Still happening today?
It is, it is, with H I S D. You wanna know what the, why it's like insane as it is? It's corruption. It's too much, there's too much corruption. It needs to be broken down. I don't care how it's broken down. I don't care. Which, which districts are what? It needs to be smaller. There needs to be smaller districts. I don't even care how many smaller districts there are. It just needs to be broken up. It's too big. It houses too much corruption. Uh, there's always gonna be a level of corruption. But it's too condensed with uh, with the city of Houston. And it's, we, we really gotta do something about our education. Cause that, if you want people to move in the city, people don't wanna live in the city because H I S D is so messed up.
It is.
There's some good schools there. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dissing the teachers, I'm not dissing, there's a lot of good people, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good people. But the fact that it's. They just gotta, the trustees gotta act like adults. They don't even act like adults. They go have secret meetings. And it's. It's embarrassing. It's in, it's embarrassing.
A whole one meeting before the real meeting.
So what can we do? So a city council, can city council really do anything regarding that? I mean.
Have no regulations over that, no.
Who's in charge of H I S D?
T E A, right?
Well, H I S D is its own entity. To be, to be fair, H I S D is its own entity. If it gets, if it's, gets taken over by the state. Then the state can go through the process and have the board members break it up. I don't know that the city's gonna do, I don't know that the state's gonna do that or e, or not. Again, I told you from the beginning, I question the state's motives.
Okay, yeah.
I'm not, I'm, I am not saying the states are a friend. I am, I am not, I never once said that. Never once, I, I wanna be clear. I never once said that. In fact, I started off griping about. Why, why uh, why, what's his face has uh, what, forty million dollars in his bank account?
Yeah, Greg Abbott.
Yeah, why, why, why does he have forty million? I mean, there's, it stinks a little bit.
You know, so but what can we do regarding that? I mean, we know there's, we know that there's corruption, we know that our schools are not improving. And so there's gotta be something that we can do as, as voters, as um elected people who are in office, to do something.
Against the incumbents, vote wherever the incumbents are with H I S D, vote against them. That would be step one. And you, and there's a lot of.
New body.
Yes.
It, and also if they're raising a lot of money, vote against them. That's another thing. Why are they raising the money is my question. Who are they owing favors to? When somebody has two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars on their finance report.
Uh, Lika, do you have any questions?
No.
For, for a job, for a job that doesn't pay anything?
Yep. That's true. And like, I think you and I have discussed this before, like we discussed the pipeline to prison.
Yeah.
Because it's so much money involved. That's the issue, it's so much. It's like our prison system is a billion dollar industry. So everybody's getting paid out of the backs of our brown and our black kids. And, and I have a problem, like with the school system where I was teaching, that's why I stopped teaching at the district. They have a no fail policy. If I have a fifth grader and this fifth grader is only reading on a kindergarten or first grade level. I have a problem with sending them on to middle school because why am I sending them on if they can't read and they can't write? The only thing that they're going to do is go out and commit a crime. You're gonna give them a felony, like you said, that's gonna mess up their life. And then they're going to be a number for the rest of their life. So you're gonna continue to be in prison. And supply, and like I said, some, I got a, a call from attorney because I mentioned some of the major corporations. That hire these prisoners at ten and eleven cents a day, but then I could buy a computer twelve and thirteen hundred dollars. So I, my corporation barely paid enough for it. You know, we paid a small amount, but look at my profit margin. So it's always about, like we have. The biggest manufacturers of mattresses right here that's coming out of Huntsville, up, up that area, you know.
Because that's, that's being made through the prisons?
Yes.
Oh, that's messed up. Oh, that's messed up.
Some of the major uh furniture companies also.
That's messed up. So what they're doing is they're using prison labor for.
Yes, instead of, like if, if I would make a, a computer, they would have to pay me ten, fifteen dollars an hour, but.
They do through prison, prison labor.
You can, I could pay you ten, eleven cents an hour, so.
That's so screwed up. Oh, that's so screwed up.
I might pay, what, a dollar twenty-five for the computer, but I'm gonna charge you twelve, thirteen hundred dollars to purchase it, so.
That's so messed up.
It's the, it's, it's the project, the, the motive. Why we think our prison system is a billion dollar industry, you know? It, that's what it is. It's too much money. Everybody is corrupt. Everybody is uh profiting for it. And I had a problem with, okay, how can you like be over a judge or something? But how can you own a private prison? So if you here, how can you judge someone, then you send them to your own prison? I'm like, this, this is, this not right, you know, and people see this going on and nobody says anything. I have a problem with that.
Yeah, kick them out.
Yeah.
Different politicians.
All of these private prisons, they make millions and millions of dollars. And just like that center on Emancipation Street down there for the supposedly illegal people. I mean, there are no, the, the city didn't issue any permits for that building. So I'm trying to figure out, how can you house all these people getting over six hundred dollars per day, per person?
It's a private, it's a private enterprise.
Private enterprise.
Private on emancipation. You know, it used to be that old furniture building downtown. So they went in and gutted and just made it like a hot, a holding place. But there are no beds in there. You have the little, the silver blankets, I don't know what you call though.
Space blankets?
Yes, everybody's laying on the floor. You don't get a bath maybe once a week. You don't have a two breast. Um, and the kids are dying in there because if I speak Spanish and you only speak English and I have a peanut allergy. And you giving me peanut butter, I'm allergic to that. But you speak English and I speak Spanish, how are we going to communicate? You know, and then it was the big thing about the sexual abuse of the small children, you know? And the children were complaining and saying stuff, nobody's doing nothing. So that's, that's my point of just being advocate, you know, for the pipeline to prison and. These, these kids on emancipation, you know, that nobody's listening to.
You know, which brings me back to immigration.
Yes.
And how, so we talked about how um, these, this camp is here. And um, the mayor, they're like, oh, there's nothing we can do about it. But yet, um, I think it was last year or, or something like that, um, there was a sex shop that was gonna open up with a robot. Selling uh robotic, um, you could have sex with a robot. And you know how quick city council, you know how quick city council passed the law to make sure that they could not operate? In a heartbeat. I mean, it happened like within like twenty-four hours. The store now that they're opening and then like twenty-four hours later, the city passed, yet. This place in, on an awful masturbation has been opened, you know, for months. And city council's like, oh. And there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can.
Don't have any building permits.
They have to have something from the city.
It's nothing as of now, it's still nothing.
It's an issue, this is an issue I have to ask the, the, you know, city lawyer. Cause I don't, to be fair, I don't know the law on that.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know. Uh, there could be an issue of preemption. It could be an issue that there was only so many, there's only so much that the city can do. If it's a federal law, you know, we can't do, I don't, I don't know.
I don't either.
I'm mad enough to say.
Well, I'm just saying like, other cities are not, are not having this problem. So why does Houston have it? You know, why are these people in Houston? And I'm not saying they should be anywhere else, but why are they in my city?
So we could, we could, one thing, we could, we could look at doing. And I, I'd, I'd say don't fund it. If we do provide any, any city revenue to it, we could not fund it. But then I, I say that, but then I'd actually wanna see what our funds are doing. Cause here's the other flip side of that. What if, what if the money we're giving is actually helping the people there?
Yeah.
So and it's, that's.
It's like a catch twenty-two almost.
It's a difficult issue that I'd have to look at closely, closely. That's a complicated issue. But what, the one thing I will say that other people don't talk about, cause I don't like the idea that we're separating mothers from uh daughters, from babies.
Yes.
But that has happened.
Numerous times.
Not, not just, not just with uh immigrants that are here, whether legally or not. It's also happened to poor people, they've got, they've gotten uh, you know, different charges. They've gotten, I, I was in a, I was, again, I've done defense law. Um, whenever I first started practicing law, I was uh, you know, I did criminal defense. I interned at the DA's office. And I saw some stuff there that just, oh, that stuff was horrible. I defended one gal. She was uh, she allegedly committed welfare fraud. And she, she told the judge, look, I'm sorry for what I did. I'm happy to pay back the money. Just give me some type of probation. I accept it, I'll just pay it back. And you know what that judge did?
Turned him down.
Put her in jail. Baby in hand.
I don't care.
Baby was crying. I had to watch the child for a couple of hours until the grandmother came and picked up the child. So we're talking about separating mothers from babies. It happens. So we're talking about separating mothers from babies, it happens all the time in Harris County. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's right whether it's, whether you're here illegally or illegally, I don't think, I just don't think it's right. We need to, our justice system needs to change, it really does, if you aren't hurting people, we need to evaluate it differently. We need to completely evaluate it differently, I don't like the idea of separating kids from, from parents, what, eh. And if, if you're, if you, you shot somebody, of course, what do you expect? If you stab somebody, of course, what do you expect? If you stole money, you're wrong, you need to pay it back. But I don't.
But why didn't you steal the money? Like what happened that made you, are you hungry, you know, or?
What's the issue, what's the issue? And the biggest thing is, does it, does it, is it hurting? Who's it hurting, you separating you from your babies, who's it hurting? Can you be helped, if we can help people, we need to help people.
And also, I don't know if you know about family law, this is a, this from my research. Isn't in Texas that it, they have a high standard that they wanna keep the children with the uh, the parents? If something would come on, they would wanna make sure that the children would stay with the parents instead of separating them or giving them to someone else. It was some kind of law about that, like if you go to family law or something like that, that Texas is high on making sure that the kids stay with the parents.
Yes, yeah, but I, I'll, I'll tell you. We got, so.
So many laws.
No, 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 I, I, I actually, I, I practiced family law before, I practiced family law the first three years. I, I know exactly what you're talking about, I have the story I wanna tell you. Um, so, we did have the, the Republican family law judges were not bad, they actually were pretty decent, the family law judges. Not the juvenile, not the, I didn't, I didn't say anything about the juvenile judges, cause the Republican juvenile judges were horrible. They, they did, they deserved to be in jail, and there was one of them, John Phillips. Let me, let me tell you, let me tell you what happened, I was rep-. I was representing this, this black uh lesbian gal that wanted to adopt her niece. And there was, don't ca- I didn't, she wanted to adopt her niece, the way I think about it is okay, I'm not having to pay for her niece, sounds great. Sounds good. I don't have to pay for it, I don't care, don't care, let her adopt the kid. Uh, we first had, it was with Body Helms, I got, I got it done. And then what happened is the county attorney saw it, and was upset with her, and transferred the case to juvenile court when I wasn't looking. That judge, they had an ex parte hearing without me even telling me about it, and they took the kid away from, from my client. And then I had a motion to reconsider it, and they denied it. They, they denied it solely because she was a lesbian and they didn't want her having her niece, and I'm jumping up and down and saying. I don't wanna pay for it, we don't tax, we don't wanna pay for it, we don't wanna have to pay for it. Give her a kid, give it to her, give it to her, give it to her, cause now, now what happened. And besides, just you completely traumatized, completely traumatized the kid, completely traumatized the kid. And that was, that was actually a Democrat county attorney, by the way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, there's somebody else that's currently running for the city, the county attorney, so I'm, I'm very interested in him now. Now that you're telling me this stuff, because this is unbelievable that this person that, you know. When we say Democrat, Republican, you know, we're aligning ourselves in this, this match.
It's a gang, it's a gang, it's what it is, it's either the blood to the crypts, it's a gang.
You know, so we have to make sure that the people who are, are elected to office represent our needs and represent your views. And regardless of what party you stand for.
That's right.
And so I can vote, I, I can vote for, I mean, I voted for Judge Abbott. Because I had no idea who Linda Hilago was, back in the, you know, now. And now that she's won, I, I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with what she's done. But to me, uh Republican versus Democrat is not, is not, it's gonna hold my vote. But I just wanna make sure that the person who's in there is gonna actually do the job correctly. So it really upsets me when I find out that somebody who is supposedly a Democrat. Or supposedly, you know, has the, the more authority is actually doing the stuff against our community, the LGBTQQ community. So this is something very interesting, and I hope that our listeners are, when we go election, today's the first day of, of um early voting. Which lasts all the way to November fifth, but we, I wanna make sure that people, when they see our show and they hear us. They make sure that, you know, they're available to actually understand what's happening. And realize that this is not a Democrat versus Republican versus Independent, this is a, a you and me issue. This is regarding what affects me and what affects you, if somebody wants to adopt a child, why should they be treated anything differently? Just because of who they choose to love, yes.
And I don't. Why should we as taxpayers have to pick up the, the tab on that? I mean, if, if someone wants to take care of their kids.
Yep.
Please, please.
Please.
Please, cause I, it's, it's the same way with the city, if someone wants to feed the homeless, we should be saying, please, please. Someone wants to try to deal with the stray animal percent, uh problem, please. We'd encourage people to do the right thing, not discourage them.
Yes.
Do you think that S P C A should be um, privately, just like the zoo is?
I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the answer, I, I haven't, I haven't made a decision on that, I'd like to know more information about it. Um, and it's.
I know we talked a little bit about um, Houston not being a no kill.
Yes. I don't think it should be, I think the city should not be no kill, I, it should be no kill, we should not be killing animals. And we shouldn't be hiding it either, we should be encouraging people, at least the, the animal advocates, you know, to, to. To help where they can or be more active in it. Um, you just need to be transparent, I think a lot of times, you know, the city like hides how many animals it kills. Is really what it is with the animal shelters, they're not, they're not shelters at all, it's basically where animals go to get killed, it's like, it's like dance centers.
I mean, I see that all the time where like, I'm, you know, as um, um, pet business owner. I have a lot of people who post on my, you know, my page are like, oh hey, you know, we're, uh, these next dogs are on the, on the, on the kill list. We have to do something to make sure that these dogs, who can adopt these dogs, please foster them. Get them out of the, you know, the, the, the kill status. And I'm thinking like, oh my goodness, these, all these dogs, like what, how can we prevent all this stuff? And I see all these other cities that are moving towards a no kill shelter. And the city Houston is like, no, it's okay, we're gonna continue doing what we're doing, we're gonna. Build this shelter that costs millions of taxpayer money, and we're not gonna really do anything about it. And so, I, so I'm like, how can we making sure that, you know, that our, our S P C A are, you know, the. That's funded by the county, it's funded by the city, they get money from us. You know, we should have a really a, a, a huge program where we can, right now, it's, it's very limited, but the spare needed program. I think that it should be, if you, if you want your dog to be neutered or spayed, then it should be free or.
A nominal, a nominal charge.
Or a very low cost, you know, right now it costs like five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it needs to be like thirty, less than a hundred dollars, more like less than fifty.
Five hundred dollars, that's what my friend just, just got quoted for, to, to get his dogs snipped.
They have two of them.
And if you have two dogs, who has a thousand dollars, and he's like, no. He's like, I'm not gonna do it, uh, I'm not. I'm, I'm just not.
We can't afford not to do that. Because what happens if we don't do it, then they end up having another litter of animals that, that end up, what are we gonna do with them? So what this, here's what the city should do, I'm gonna go back to what I told you, we need to be honest, we need to be very transparent with our budget. Say this is where the money is, this is where it goes, if it's not enough, you know, then it's not enough. If it is enough, then it is enough, we just need to be transparent with it, and if we want more money, we gotta ask the taxpayers for it. That's all I say, and I'm not, I, I'm, I'm, we're always against tax increases because what happens is it hurts the poorest amongst us. It really does, it's the, I, I don't, I could afford more taxes, it doesn't bother me anything. But people living paycheck to paycheck, another five dollars hurts them hard. So what I, it, it could be a lot of things. So what we need to do is, we need to, on our website, the city website needs to say, this is what the budget is. It needs to include all the budgets, not just the, not just the general budget, it needs to include the enterprise fund. Cause what the city likes to do during, when there's a hiring freeze, it goes and hires people where the hiring freeze doesn't apply. Like the airport system, that's what happened with that intern, they hired him during a hiring freeze.
That's what they say, yeah.
If, if we're honest about it, if we're transparent about it, and people feel like we're being transparent about it. Then you know, then I think it's, I think it's an easier sell, whatever way we need to go, whatever we need to do, however we need to navigate. People need to feel like they're being treated fairly, they need to feel like that, you know, the city's being honest with them. I don't get, whenever I'm dealing with the city, I don't get that feeling, what, I just don't.
Nobody does, yeah, if you guys are just tuning, tuning in, we, you have been listening to Pause Impact. We are Houston's first radio show dedicated to people living with HIV, their friends and family, or we'll talk one hundred. We are currently talking with Eric Dick, he is running for at large position five, early voting has started today. So you guys can go ahead and vote, and I'm glad that you guys are tuning into our show to making sure that you guys can read an affordable decision. I didn't know anything about Eric before until I met him, and I'm, I'm really moved by his passions and by his. Statements of what he's trying to say to us and his communication towards. Um, the different issues that are happening that directly affects Houston. And those are the things that we have to, as citizens, as voters, we all have to pay attention, but the main thing is we have to vote. And when we are voting, we have to make sure that we're voting for the people who are gonna represent us as a, as an individual, not as a class. Because I have a different perspective as you and as the other person, but I wanna make sure that I'm still representative as myself. I don't need somebody to say, put me in a group or, or, and say, oh, you're the, you, you're this group, you go over here. And um, just because I don't agree with you, I'm, you're gonna be shut out, you know?
Represent people as an individual, not as a class.
Yes, and so, eh, um, with that being said, you know, can we talk about Metro next?
Yes.
Um, Metro next has been, um, I've, I've read a lot about it, and I've had a lot of people on my show. Um, talking about Metro next and therefore they're against it. I, I don't know what I'm for, and I don't know what I'm against, cause they, Metro hasn't really done anything. I used to ride the Metro rail, I still do it every now and then, I take the bus, but it's, it's completely horrible. And it, it's, it's ridiculous that Houston does not have a better system that it started off, I started off my business eight years ago. And it, it really has not improved in those eight years, and I've taken, you know, I'm, I'm self-employed. So sometimes I don't, uh, my car is in the shop and it's my only car, and if it's in the shop for two or three days, I don't have time to. Buy a rental car, that's, that cuts into my profit, so I take the bus. And then when I'm taking the bus, I have to take the bus, I have to wake up usually at six o'clock in the morning, if not five. To make sure that I'm at work by nine, because that's usually my first appointment is at nine o'clock and it's in the Heights, I live downtown. So it takes me about two hours to get to the Heights, when if by car, it takes me ten minutes. I jump on forty five and I get to I ten and voila, I'm there. But if on the bus, I had to go, I have to catch a bus from T C, you know, um, T H U or U of H. And then catch a bus to downtown, from downtown, I have to catch another bus, and then that bus will take me to, you know, and if I, one bus is late. It ruins my entire day, ruins my entire day, and that could be at, uh, one o'clock in the m- at one o'clock P M, or it could be at six o'clock. If one bus is late, it ruins everything, and, and even though the, the bus, like the schedule's like, oh, this bus comes every fifteen minutes. Or this bus comes every twenty minutes, this bus comes every hour. You know, how can we improve our transportation system? And I'm not sure if this, if this um, Metro next that is currently on the ballot is the right thing for us. So what's your, um, I've heard a lot of people like just vote for it, we can, we can. Um, rearrange the money once we have it, and then I've heard people saying, no, I want, I want them to really tell me. Of where the money is actually gonna go to before I s- I vote for um. Billion dollar project that I have no idea where this money is gonna go to, and, and you know, Metro rail doesn't really work. I work since certain communities, but it, you know, they're, uh, unless it's really downtown, the red line, it's empty. That Metro rail is usually empty, and they're, they're trying to put it, you know, to, from here to the airport, it's gonna be empty. Who wants to take the Metro rail, who wants to spend five hours on the Metro rail to get your flight? You're gonna miss your flight before you get there, nobody will, so, um, that's my spill on the Metro next program.
So here's.
What's yours?
Here's my beef with it, my, here's, here's where, here's where I have a really big problem with it. Again, I say, we just need to be honest about this. I feel like they're not being honest, more, more specifically, ten million dollars of the Metro next money. Is being used now for advertising, did you know that? Did you know that they actually get taxpayer money to the tune of ten million dollars?
To advertise?
To advertise, to promote it, that's our money going to there. So you know, you heard me at the beginning, like huff and puff about, we need to do this issue, we need to do this issue. How much, how much could ten million dollars help us with, let, let's, let's start with a few issues, the HIV issue. The HIV issue, how much could one million dollars help the HIV issue? How much could one million dollars help the homeless issue? How much could one million dollars help uh, the stray animal issue? So for, for them, for Metro getting ten million, ten million dollars for, just for advertising. Just for advertising, they get ten million dollars. And it's, it's more like eight hundred, it's like eight million for um, for advertising, two million for the lawyers or all that. But all in all, I'm lumping it, I'm, I'm rounding up, cause it's, it's ten, it's a total of ten million dollars. And that, I'm not even, I wish, I wish I was joking, I wish I was puffing, I wish I was making facts up, but I'm not. When we talk about actually helping people, and I, don't get me wrong, I'm all, I'm all for light rail, I'm all for expanding it. If we're doing it at an affordable rate, if it's, if people aren't getting rich doing it. I like the idea of having more options for transportation, I, I want that, but what I don't want to happen is what's happening now. Where people are using that as a vehicle to get rich, and that's wrong. Because our government should be honest with people, it needs to be transparent, and it needs to show, just lay the cards on the table. And people can decide whether they want it or not, what we cannot do, cannot do. Is spend ten million dollars of our taxpayer money advertising for something, I have to vote no, I have to vote no. Because it's coming at me with dirty hands, it's asking me to do something whenever it cheated to begin with. It has, it always has to be a no with me on that, cause they cheated.
So this Timmy, are they gonna get this Timmy?
They're spending it now.
So whether they approve this program or not, they already got this ten million dollars.
They took what the city should do is pass an ordinance where it's criminal to do something like that. Where you go to jail for doing something like that, that should already be passed, cause that, that's, I wanna use four letter words, that's messed up. We can take a bond, I, seriously, we can take a bond to do TV advertisements to promote something. How much would ten million dollars help all these causes we jumped up and down? That we'd probably help a lot, it probably funded, at least we'd be closer, closer to dealing with it, closer, at least one of the issues.
If we, if we put ten mil, if we put ten million dollars and split it up, one million dollars with all our ten causes. We would be way better off than we are today.
And spending, and you know what, why, we'd be better off than spending it on TV on advertisement for an issue, what they're, so.
That they're trying to shove down our throats.
That's, and that's, that's what's happening, is they're spending ten million dollars shoving an issue down our throats, cause it's making the contractors their money. Uh, there's an argument, and uh, what, what I believe, and I don't know if it's a hundred percent true. What I believe is that we spend about ten times as much on the cost of rail than what it really should happen. Uh, meaning that, uh, one of the, there was a report by Ted Olberg. Where he said, uh, per inch of rail was three thousand dollars, and I believe that's at least ten. Should be per inch of rail, so my point is, people are getting rich in these government contracts. And that shouldn't be happening, it needs, we need, we need just to be honest, if we're honest about it, then people can decide where they wanna decide. If we're doing a good job with Metro, people are seeing people are riding it and we're moving forward with it, you wouldn't have to spend ten million dollars on it.
To convince me that you need to, um, add more rail slash. When, when, right now you can't even improve what we currently have, there's so many, um. Issues, there's just, you know, when, when, I, I take the bus, so I have no shame in that.
I want the rail too.
You know, like, right now, when I take the bus, there's no shelter in this hundred degree weather, there's no sidewalks. I'm sitting on a street where there's a pole, and I'm hoping that the bus is gonna arrive sometime within the next day.
I'll hope you don't get run over.
Or run over or splash, you know, and there's no cover, there's no bench, there's no, there's no nothing. Just a stick and a pole and a, a. and a a a right there signing the bus, what number the bus is gonna go. And making sure they know that I can text his number
That's it.
to get this bus light. I'm like, what are you gonna do for me?
That's it.
That is gonna give me a little bit of shelter. So like, if you're gonna spend ten million dollars,
That's it. Uh-huh.
why don't you improve, why don't, why why isn't there a bench on every um metro stop? Why isn't there a cover? Cause we know it rains, we know it floods, we know that
Except for rain, yes. It's like, it's raining, right?
I'd 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 to be fair, I'd rather I'd rather if we were the ten million dollars to go to some of the humanitarian issues.
Okay.
But you know what? I guess I would, fine. I'd accept it for at least covering up, with covering up, you know, where people are, where people, where there's need for shelter. I think I think really that if we should spend, you understand my frustration?
Yes.
That that's my frustration with the city is we have the money, just we're spending it in ways that that are just, they're sad, they're very sad. What we need to do, and we have a ship, where there's a big hole in it, the big hole is corruption. We need to try to clog it, we need to try to stop it. It's not a, it's not a Republican issue, it's not a Democrat issue, it's it's an issue. We need to stop the corruption, we need to stop it.
Yes.
What I'll do at City Hall is I'll point it out, and you'll see me be upset about it. And the reason I wanna be upset about it is because there's so many more important things we should be spending the money on.
Yes.
So many more important things, like eh the whole issue with HIV.
Yeah.
That's that's a legitimate issue. It's a legitimate issue, but we're more interested in than just bribery.
And let me ask you, um I know when you're in City Hall, if you bring up an issue in your district, I know you're a would be citywide. Uh do the mayor have to approve what you want?
Yes. You uh you can't put anything on the agenda, being a strong mayor for the government.
Yeah. Yes.
The only thing a city council member can do is uh, well, what usually happens with city council members is uh, you know, they they share the funding source from the mayor
Right, right.
and they just do whatever the mayor, they they wanna do whatever the mayor wants.
What they tell them to do, yeah.
Right? And you're gonna find out, I'm a very independent type of person. I say that because, you know, the Republicans tell me to do certain things and I'm like, okay, well, explain it to me.
Yeah.
And I listen. And I'm like, okay, well, you guys explain to me why I'm wrong. And I listen and sometimes I'm like, okay, well, you're right. And sometimes I'm like, no, you're actually, you're actually wrong. They're right on this one. You're right.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
So that that's what you get with me, is you're gonna get someone, I don't, I don't care what anybody thinks. The only per person I care about, who who, the only people I care about who think are the voters or my constituents. I don't care what special interests thinks, I don't care what people are getting contracts think, I just don't care.
Yes.
And I'm not there to make money, I'm not there necessarily to make friends, but which I will, and I do, I do love people, you'll find. I just, I'm a people lover. And I am a bit of a people pleaser. There's a way I can please people, I will beg them, well, I'll try every way I can. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a character defect, I think that's a good thing.
No, it's but it's not, it there's a difference between um a pleaser and a ass kisser.
That's a good thing. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I can, and I can say that, cause we are on their radio. And so, you know, what my point is getting at is that, you know,
Two different things, two different things. Two different things.
I can please, I can be cordial to um my neighbor, I can be cordial who's who is a Republican and we have a disagreement. But at the same time, I can say, hey, you know what? These are the issues and this is what we need to combine and we can come to an agreement. It's not you're right, I'm wrong. It's not that I'm a Republican and you're Democrat and and whatever I say is completely true or is completely uh one hundred percent um, you know, the fact, it's really investigating of what's gonna really help the majority of the population that's happening in Houston.
The people. Yeah.
And we know that the major of the population is, and now it's gonna be black and brown people. And they're gonna be the majority, that's it's in Houston. We know that Houston is a very diverse city and we have a a lot of populations. We have a a very big Asian population here in Houston, you know? What about them? What are we doing to help them out and help um their community grow, you know?
That's a really interesting, uh do you know much about why we have such a large Asian uh community in in Houston?
No, do tell.
So during the seventies, uh there was uh communism fell and our communism started in uh what Vietnam? So we, what a lot of uh people fled Vietnam in the seventies and came to Houston. The Vietnamese community, which I represent, a lot of Vietnamese people. Uh the Vietnamese community, it was the result of communism in Vietnam. They all, a large amount of them traveled. They have, I can't remember, they they have a date and they have like a story that they talk about it. They have a festival every year for like the time that wherever their family, their families came to Houston. That's why it's it's really fascinating.
Yes.
But here's the beauty of it, is we get such really good food in that area. The Vietnamese, the Chinese food in in off Bel Air is second to none.
Yeah.
Yes.
Second to none.
Yes.
Houston is a wonderful city. Houston has a great history of different communities coming together. And I I just, I love the city.
How do we grow that, you know? So how do we making sure that um they're not feeling that the our Asian population is not feeling neglected, as well as our um black and brown people are not feeling neglected? Cause you know, third ward, my trash recycling bin has not been picked up for the past two months. But I go to River Oaks and they are picked up every freaking time. They do not miss a date. River Oaks, Heights.
Woodlands.
Woodlands, they don't miss a date on their recycling bins to be picked up. But in my neighborhood,
So we
it's been, it's been, it is, and I have to call, I have to call three-one-one. Hey, my recycling hasn't been picked up. Okay, we're gonna put, just leave it there and somebody will pick it up. Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay, they'll pick it up. You'll get it. Yeah, right.
Yeah. Two weeks later, it's still my my recycling bin and it's not just mine, it's my neighbors as well too.
Everybody.
Where our, all of our recycling bins are out thinking it's gonna be picked up one day. And I'm, you know, I'm like, well, at what point do I just bring it in and I just put it all in the trash, which we all know that you know, certain, our recyclings are not going to recycle. So we have this new plant.
Yep.
You know, I wanna talk more recycling a little bit now, so you know?
No, I haven't talked about recycling. I'm just upset our recycling's not going to recycle, and that's why it's all
Eh Yes, so F C C, FCC is our currently our new company that handles the recycling.
That's what it is. It's not.
And I was so excited because we're not taking glass. But only, only come to find out that it's all, they they're only open eight to four, you know?
As we're shopping.
Certain times.
You know, these little mid li- little mid-hours that, you know, these drivers, once they're full, where do they take their things? They have to drive all the way to Conroe
Yep.
to take it. And traffic is a, is a nightmare. So if you have to drive all the way to Conroe
Yeah, all the way back.
to empty your your um your truck and then drive all the way back, that's two hours, three hours minimum that you wasted. And that is sure everything goes smoothly, you know?
Yeah.
So I can understand why they're not picking up my recycling. So as city council, do you think that we should have, like, how can you um not maybe guarantee, but ensure that our recycling is actually going to this this brand-new recycling plant that taxpayers just funded? How is it, I I don't understand is that how did we vote for something that is only open for four hours or for six hours a day?
The time, the time, or something.
Money to Friday.
More working hours.
And nobody, you know, it's all the way in and B F E, which our drivers are not able to go to, you know, traffic. You know, and so what do we do? I can't be mad them, you know, our trucks are not, are not um uh they don't have air conditioning in them, some of them. So these people are sweating their butts off in these trucks.
Sound it takes you through.
And they don't have the necessary equipment to do this stuff. You know, I didn't have a trash bin, I didn't have a a recycling bin for four months because uh the we, they dumped the recycling, my recycling bin inside the the trash contractor. You know, it somehow the 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 pinch got loose and it
Destroyed.
you know, like it instead of like picking it up and just dumping it and putting it back in, well, they put the whole thing in there. So they're like, okay, so we don't have any tr- eh trash bin at the bin, I mean, not anymore, it's coming soon, don't worry.
We don't have anymore.
Six months later, I finally get one, only to come find out that my trash, my my um recycling bin is not being collected. And I don't know what to do about it. So as city council, what can you do to ensure, I know, we have ten minutes left?
So the so the the biggest thing, again, I go back to, you have to be honest.
It's always honesty.
If you're not honest about the trash going to recycling or not, people don't believe you.
And it's not a one-time thing either.
We need, again, we need, we need to be honest about it.
Yes.
And the city's not being honest. If you're honest, you can just let the cars fall where they are. My bigger issue with the whole trash pickup, and I I do believe in recycling and all that. I like the idea of a deposit, uh 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 what is it, uh like a ten-cent deposit thing for for glass, that could be helpful.
Yeah.
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 But here's my bigger issue, is the humanitarian issue involving the um the 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 truck workers, the uh the drivers, where they don't have air conditioning, where they, where you don't have, you have overheating.
Mm-hmm. No brakes.
Yeah.
You have them driving in a hundred-degree weather and then getting sick because it's getting hot and passing out.
Yeah.
Passing out.
I have really big problems with that. And we need to, and that that's, it's wrong. It's wrong that the city has those, that has such low standards that it's putting people in harm's way. That's it's kind of un, it actually is very unacceptable. If if this was a private business, they'd be getting sued.
Yes.
Yes.
But because again, government has government immunity, because it has immunity, it's able to get away with stuff like that. Need to be honest. We need to be honest about the issues. Everybody, regardless of being in the rich neighborhood or not, should get basic city services.
Yes, yes, yes.
Public safety, infrastructure, your trash pickup, your clean water.
Yes, basically.
Everybody should get that before we start going to anything else. That should be the guarantee.
Yeah.
Everybody gets the core services. Everybody does. I'm all for a lot of things, but we gotta pick our priorities. What are the most important? And then if we don't, if we don't have enough resources, again, you just show where all the money's spent. And you say, hey, taxpayers, this is what it is, you ask what we do about it. I think we have enough resources. I think what we need to do is stop the corruption. My issue is with corruption. I really think that there's pay-to-play type of stuff going on.
Mm-hmm.
You see it with that interim. You see it with uh uh the mayor's former law partner getting seven million dollars. You see it with Metro getting ten million dollars.
Hmm.
You see, you see just, you see this crooked stuff. And also another thing, here's what I think a a true person should do whenever they're elected to a nonpartisan race, they shouldn't have a party.
Mm-hmm.
You shouldn't have a party, you should be no party. You shouldn't be Republican, Democrat, anything, cause it's a nonpartisan race. You should represent everybody. And again, especially the people you disagree with, you wanna know why you disagree with them and you you wanna see their, what their perspective is.
Eric, I wanna thank you so much for coming on our show and for being being brave enough to come
Yeah.
and take questions from us, from the HIV community.
I'm not immune at all.
And um being, you know, upfront and thank you so much for just your honesty. On all these issues that are happening in the Houston community that that is affecting all of us. It's affecting, you know, HIV, when we say that HIV doesn't have a face,
Yes, it does.
it really does not have a face. But at the same time, it does.
Mm-hmm. It does.
It it affects everybody. You know, you you have to know somebody that is affected by HIV community, and if you don't, now you do.
Those are bad.
You know? And so, as I, we have ten minutes left, and these ten minutes I wanna reserve for you to talk to the Houston public, give them your information, where to find you, where to donate to your campaign, should you be, I I tried to look for you, I currently find any kind of Facebook um campaign um site and not that, but I do wanna tell, I would, I do want you to tell our voters of what you stand for in this election, you know, cause we talked a lot about um all these different issues, and I think that you're like really on point on all of them. And so, these extra like nine minutes that I have left on my show, I really want you to really speak to our voters and say, how can they find you? And give them the the compelling reason of why they should vote for Eric Dick for city council at-large five.
So you can go to my website, ericdick dot com, dot org, ericdick dot org. Also, um I have a Facebook page, I have a Twitter page, I have an Instagram page, most of them are uh Dick Law Firm. Uh that's, it's my law firm and I've kind of built up a pretty big following on Instagram, Twitter and Facebook. Also on Facebook, uh at Eric B. Dick. There's, I have a a lot of followers there. It doesn't, none of that really matters. So um and I, of course, if 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 the voters, if if people are listening and they wanna vote for me, I appreciate that. And but it's not something I necessarily take for granted. And I don't wanna be, some people jump up and down and say, vote for me, vote for me, vote for me. I disagree with that. I think people will vote for me if they if they appreciate what I have to say. I think if someone who votes for me is gonna understand where I am on the issues, they're gonna understand I'm an advocate for individuals. I'm ad, what 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 did you say? Cause you gave such a good line. I really liked the line. I'm advert, I'm eh I'm advocate for the cause, not the
Uh not for the people, but for um
Advocate for the people, not the
The community, I don't know what I said, but it was, it was a good line.
It was a good line. It was a great line. It was a great line. But that that, all it is, is you just wanna do the right thing. If you wanna do the right thing, it doesn't matter. All I wanna do is the right thing.
So what made you run for position five, at-large five? I mean, you live in uh
I live off uh Memorial, near Memorial Park. I live in Rice Military area.
Okay.
Um I like, I like the nonpartisan nature of uh city politics. That's really why, and I've always
I mean, so there's like one through five, so what made you pick
It was an op, it was an open seat.
Okay.
I've run, and I've run for office a number of times. I ran for a city council uh four years ago. I got a third place, twenty-two percent. I've ran for mayor, I got eleven percent when I ran for mayor. I ran for city ca, I just, I've, I like to run for office, I really do. I enjoy meeting people, I enjoy helping people. And it's actually more fun to run for office than it is to get elected. I say that because elected at the Department of Education, it's hard. It's hard because, you know, everybody tells you, everybody's saying different things, and you gotta just kind of mute them out, and you gotta pick the right, you gotta say, what's right in my heart? And that's what you do. If voters want someone that's gonna go, what's right in my heart, and stand by it and say that this was the right decision, then under vote. If they wanna go without anything else, they pick, they pick, they decide who they wanna vote for.
Yeah.
What I can promise is I'm gonna be honest, I'm gonna be transparent, and I'm gonna explain why I voted a certain way. If you disagree how I voted, tell me why. I will listen. And you might convince me, and I might have been wrong. And that's, that's all I can do. And that's all you can expect out of anybody, is just to be honest, transparent, and tell you why they thought the certain way they did. That's what, that's what you get with me.
So what, so once you're elected, how can people, how are you gonna be engaged with people? We, I I um, I I have a friend or she, she, like I have to th- there's this lady that I, that I always see um every day Monday to Thursday, she works at a apartment complex. I have to give her my ID in order to get a key. And I said, hey, are you gonna go vote? And she says, hmm, why do I need to go vote if there, if every politician just lies to me?
Hmm.
They just tell me what they want me to hear.
That's for sure.
And then they, once they elected in office, I never hear from them again. So how can people reach out to you or how are you planning to stay engaged with the community to making sure that you are held accountable for all these great ideas that you have mentioned? So once you're elected, how are people gonna be able to you know, say, hey, other than going to your law office or or, you know, calling you, cause you do have a large Facebook group? You know? How, how do you plan on, do you plan on holding town halls? Do you plan on coming to radio station shows like mine? Thank you very much.
I'm happy to be on radio stations. I do have my own radio show on AM nine fifty.
Okay.
On Saturdays, uh one to three P M. Uh we were bumped for the last two weeks because of sports, but we're gonna be back on
Right, right.
Next week. Um I I march in the uh LGBT parade every year. I've given out three thousand shirts of my law firm for the last ten years.
Three thousand, that's a lot.
Every year, every year, I've given out about three thousand shirts. If you go downtown, you see people wearing Dick Law Firm law shirts, it's cause I gave them out at the at the pride parade.
At the pride.
So I know, the easiest way people can get in touch with me, they contact my law firm. I listen to those voicemails every day. They can call me directly on my cell phone, which is seven-one-three-four-nine-eight-seven-nine-six-nine. They can call me in my law office, eight-three-three-seven-rights. It's easier to remember.
Right.
Eight-three-three-seven-rights, leave a message. Uh when I elected as city, as city council, I'll come up with a, you know, a simple number like that, you just leave a message. I usually, you know, you get a bunch of spam calls, so I check messages, I screen calls. I'll have a good staff.
Right.
Y'all have a bipartisan staff. In fact, I probably, it'll probably be mostly Democrats on my staff to be fair. And uh just people, I'm gonna have a good staff, they communicate through the staff. I'm gonna be, I'm, you're gonna pick causes, I'm gonna pick the right causes. My thing is, I'm just gonna do the right thing. The right thing goes past parties, it goes past everything. If whenever you pick the right, the right decision, what's right in your heart, true to your heart.
Uh thank you so much for coming on my show. I really wanna um again say, I I called Uh thank you so much for coming on my show, I really wanna um again say, I I called that, you were really out of the blue. And I had you and you were like, yes, definitely, I and I've had several candidates who said, no, they wouldn't come on my show when we're talking about HIV.
Not at all. I'm happy, I think there's humanitarian issue.
And they just don't know really know what about it and so. Um I'm even some gay people who are running for office have decided not to come on my show because of. They may feel intimidated of what questions we may be asking them and I don't feel like we ask any um too many, too too many vast people, you know?
Too many Ash people, you know.
But um I I just wanna say thank you so so much for for participating in our conversations.
Yes, yes.
To make sure that people have a voice, that they may not know that that there was available for you, so when people are just going down through the names and like, oh, Eric Dick, okay. I see Eric Dick on Pause Impact and he and I actually did like what he had to say and I do like what you have to say, I do like what you.
Yes, yes.
Um honest and sincere and just being truthful and transparent. And I think the most thing that I can get from you is that you're transparent.
Mm-hmm.
Um you're not about to say something that is is um, I just wanna, just because I wanna hear it.
Just to help.
You know, just to get me in my vote, like you're just gonna talk to me because um you wanna pander to the. Um LGBTQ community who happen to be HIV positive, you know, I don't, I don't have.
You're you you're pushing a humanitarian issue, I agree with you very mu- I I agree very much with you.
I don't feel like that, you know, so thank you so much again for just.
Yes, yes.
Um coming on our show and just being a part of our, or our new little um enterprise that we're having here. And um we have a couple of minutes left, actually I don't have zero minutes left, but um I have my co-host Lady Hill and she has a ton of.
Two minutes.
She she has a ton of things that are happening in the community that she's been a part of, that she's currently doing.
Yes.
And that I I need, I always have to make sure that that those things are also being mentioned. Because as much as um our show is, we wanna make sure that we are talking to candidates.
Definitely, we need to.
We also wanna make sure that we are um walking the talk and doing the things that we're actually doing.
Yes, yes, yes.
And um I'm just, I'm grateful that I have this opportunity to discuss.
Yes.
And so um we have um, you know, like with just Thomas Street.
Yes.
I I'm actually, I'm not, do you, do you know what Thomas Street is?
Thomas Street, yeah.
I don't know what Thomas Street is, no.
Okay.
So Thomas Street is actually the first HIV clinic in Houston.
Yes.
Uh for people living with HIV, so anybody who has HIV is part of Harris County Hospital District.
Hmm.
And um I I'm actually a patient of theirs and we have an advisory board.
Yes.
Part of the advisory board is to schedule the Thanksgiving meals.
Yes.
Well, right now we have um, it was in the process of being canceled because we weren't able to get the funding for turkeys.
Okay.
We are a um, even though we are part of Harris County Hospital District, they don't fund anything for HIV for us.
No.
We have to, all of our funding is really through um the Ryan White Services, which they give, they they, they pay for my care, they pay for everything.
Yes, medicine.
And um they pay for my medicine, they pay for my doctor's visit, they pay for everything and, but they don't pay for other things.
Yes.
And what we're offering is a Thanksgiving meal.
Yes.
For people who cut, who are Thomas Street patients.
The best, yeah.
And these are low income community.
Yes.
Who don't have the ability to have a meal, um a cooked meal.
Yes.
A Thanksgiving meal.
A real meal.
That people will have, be sick of of having, they're like, oh, I had, this is my fifth Thanksgiving meal, you know? And these people are like, oh, this is my first and only meal or.
No meal.
No meal that I've had.
Sandwich today.
Exactly, so we have been really pushing. Super excited that.
Yes.
I I I placed it on Facebook, I said, hey guys, I need my community be, you know, to come, come towards me. I had, I was only expecting, I only needed twenty turkeys and I have twenty-eight.
Yes.
I only needed um three hundred, I I will, now I need four hundred bottles of water and four hundred rolls. I have three hundred of each, now I need green beans, so I'm about to like uh tell my people to tell my community, hey.
Yes. We got the green beans.
I need green beans, I need my um, I need bottles of water, I need just these little things.
We got it.
That are part of the community that will make a difference in somebody else's life.
For me or somebody.
It's not, uh it doesn't affect me because I do have family and friends.
Yes, I know.
That love me and that they will give, they will feed me.
Yes.
But I'm lucky and not everybody is not lucky.
Somebody know.
And we, I realize this as going to Thomas Street, as being part of the board, as being part of um the community. Being part of um the awareness of HIV and knowing that not everybody comes from. A background that they can maintain.
Yes.
Uh uh have a healthy lifestyle.
Yes, yeah.
And so when they come to um Thanksgiving meal and they have this meal that they get from us. It's, you know, the one meal in the entire year that they have, it's cooked, that is a meal that they can get and it's, it's real.
A good meal.
You know, and so I'm I I, with that being said, I wanna take it to Lady Hill and um.
Okay, like we say the church announcements.
Yes. Yes, so um go ahead Lady Hill, go ahead, go ahead and give it your.
Alright, I'm gonna say it fast, okay.
No, you have, you have, we have, I don't know where my gum is, sorry.
I have a. Okay, and I pre-recorded my story time, what I do because a lot of my children um do not have anybody to read to them and they don't have books at home.
Yes.
And a lot of my children, cuz I work in Acres Home and Fifth Ward, are like three, four grade levels behind in reading, so what I do on Facebook Live, cuz most of them have phones. I read a bedtime story to my children by Facebook so we can interact and I can talk with them and I can tell them the things good night before they go to bed. That's every night, Monday through Thursday from eight to eight thirty.
And can I, something super simple, as explaining, this is the book cover.
Yeah. The basics.
This is the binder.
Yeah.
This is the back.
This is the book cover.
This is the the illustrator is the one who created the design, the writers who wrote the words. And I as soon, I I've got nephews, nieces and nephews and I didn't know about this. Until Lady Hill started telling me all this stuff and I'm like, when I tell them this stuff, they're like, who?
What?
What?
Just basic things.
Like. They don't, I'm like, you know who the illustrators, you know what the illustrator is? They're like, what's an illustrator? Like, oh, that's the person who actually created the pictures in the book, you know, versus the person who wrote, a lot of people think that. The person who wrote the book is the same person who did the pictures.
Is not.
And so, um anyways, Lady Hill, God continue.
Yeah, I do that because.
I'm so, I'm I'm so grateful.
I'm trying to close the literacy gap with a lot of our children, you know, trying to give them the same equal uh playing field as kids over there in River Oak. I think just because my zip codes say one thing, I should not be denied a good education because I stay in a low poverty area. And the next thing we're going to do, Sept- uh the second Saturday in, um what's next month, November, we got so much. Oh, I forgot, this weekend in Conroe, I'm speaking on the domestic violence uh walk we're having in Conroe.
Yes, yes.
And um I wasn't gonna do it, but it was, the lady had called me, her uh sister, which was sleeping on her way to work. Her husband went in and just shot her in the back of the head and killed her. So on his own, he goes to the daycare and he picks up the kids and tells the children, go upstairs and wake up your mother. And the back of her, her head is all blown out. And so I was saying, I had other things to do, so the kids in uh called me and they said that they wanted me to speak on behalf of their mother. So I could not turn them away, so I will be going speaking on that, so anybody else who suffer from domestic violence. We had, I had my domestic violence uh event about two weeks ago, I only asked for fifty bags for women cuz I helped a lot of women. That's fleeing for domestic violence, when we go dinner with police escort, they just flee with nothing. So I only asked God for fifty bags, I end up with a hundred and sixty bags. So, yes, we aim to help more women, we had snacks, food, hygiene products, you know, everything that when they leave, they do have something, a care package to take with them.
Hello. Amen.
So if you're available in Conroe, everybody, make sure you come out there, we're gonna do the domestic violence walk. And then I will be speaking on domestic violence, now the second Saturday next month in November in Acres Home, nineteen oh one, um. I can't think of the church, Ferguson Way, we're gonna have a STEM program for the children in Acres Home because STEM is not heard of in Acres Home. So I have a couple of engineers that are from NASA that's gonna come out and help us and we're gonna be doing different STEM projects for the children in Acres Home. Now, the second Saturday in December, we have chartered a bus with First Class Tours, we're gonna take the children. Uh from Third Ward, Fourth Ward, Acres Home, who never get out of the community, we're gonna take them to show them River Oaks over there where you stay in Memorial. I want to show them that the world is bigger than the projects that they live, it's people on the other side of our city. That are living a good life that they don't have, when when they call the police, the police will come, but when we call the police, they not coming.
That's true.
So I want the children to see this other side because a lot of my children have never left the community. So this bus is is at no call, uh I have slots for fifty-six kids. And I have Coz that's been a sponsor, they're gonna donate the toys for the children and they're gonna donate coats, coats for me, for my children. And I'm sitting beside fifteen seats for special need kids. So if you have a special need baby and you want your child to come, please let me know and call me at eight three two four one seven one six nine six. If I need to make any accommodation, cuz I do have a registered nurse that will be on there to help any of the kids, she donated her time. And I will have a Harris County Sheriff Department uh sheriff on the bus with us also. So then the next week, we're giving away two hundred and fifty bicycles for the children in the city of Houston. And we also partnered with Thomas Street Clinic, we're gonna be giving away books, I got so many books from everybody that's giving us books.
Yes.
Cuz a lot of our children do not have books in the home, so it's so important for me to put a book at each one of these children's home. And while I'm on Facebook Live, we can have this book and I can take them word by word because I'm trying to close this literacy gap. Trying to give these children at least a chance, you know, a lot of people are not giving them chances, we're just gonna go ahead and pass you. Because we know you're coming to prison, because you know, uh in most of the schools, the prison system, they either come in like the second or third grade to see. How many kids will they need to be a prisons for, you know, and I always tell my kids when they come in, do not talk to them, do not say anything to them. So they start targeting you from like the second or third grade, so they follow you. And this lets them know how many prisons that they need to build on the backs of our children. And that's why I'm building my own charter school because I believe not every curriculum fits one child. Our children have different special needs than the children will be at River, our children do not have computers to work on in the classroom. They do not have books accessible to them, so I'm trying to bring technology to our children, let them be in STEM project program. Another thing I wanna expose the children to is chess. Who said they can't play chess, if we teach them, they can, so those are some of the, and that's all of the things that we'll be doing, the children are excited. And all of the programs we're offering is at no calls, I get just like calls, called me three weeks ago, I didn't even know they watched my radio show, I have a radio show on Tuesday here. And they called me out of the booth, said, we've been watching you, we wanna partner with you. So Coz is another one of my big sponsors that I I've, you know, had now, so they wanna be providing toys and coats and. They basically say whatever you need for the children, we're here. So that's some of the things we're doing and we partnered with Joshnem to make sure that families with children with HIV. So I'm looking still for some children with HIV that still may need some toys or need some things and I haven't forgot about my homeless babies, y'all know I got y'all. I'm willing to make sure that they have a special Christmas also. Yes, so that's just.
And so, and if you're listening, we still need green beans.
Yes. Yes, we're gonna get the green beans.
We still need, we still need bottles of water to be donated.
Got the water.
We still need um mashed potatoes, instant mashed potatoes to be donated, to make up.
Yeah, to make up for the, and what day is that again?
It's November the the twenty-sixth.
Is that Thanksgiving Day?
Um it's not Thanksgiving Day, so it's it's that Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so Thanksgiving is I think the last Thursday of the month.
That changed it, right? Yes.
This is the last Tuesday of the month.
Tuesday of the month, right.
That we're hosting and so if if anybody visiting or if Eric would like to donate.
Some green, you come.
Some green beans or a a couple boxes or some um Hawaiian um bread rolls.
A a couple boxes of mashed potatoes. Rolls.
Um these, these are all for people living with HIV and it's for the Thomas Street patients, you know?
And you probably, since he's not familiar, uh a lot of the people that do come to Thomas Street. Don't have any food, so they do get one sandwich a day from Thomas Street to take their medicine and a bottle of water.
Yes.
Because some of them don't have the access like we would do, I could just go to Lubie's and get a meal to take my medication, so they give them this one sandwich with the water to take their medication.
So what we started because of, what we realized was that the advisory board realized that people come in fasting for their blood work and and you can come in fasting all the way until twelve P M.
Yes.
To get blood work done.
Or later.
And when you come in and you don't have any food in your stomach after twelve, you're you're hungry, I mean and and after twelve P M.
No, I'm having a good night. A lot of them have to catch the bus back.
You're you've, you have to catch the bus back, so we provide you with a sandwich, we provide you with a a bottle, um.
A lot of water, of fruit sometimes.
It's it, we don't, there's no bottled water unfortunately, but you do get a, you get a piece of sandwich, which has like um.
Hmm.
Some kind of meat and and cheese and then it has um.
It's a little bit of the.
Uh a some some kind of fruit, whether it's a banana or an apple or an orange or something or, and it has a bag of chips.
Orange, I say an orange. Yeah.
It's simple, but that little bit of thing is it makes the the world, the world for them.
Affordable.
And we have, we have gone from two days a week to now four days a week, so we're every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, we give out the sandwiches from eleven to one.
Those are all like. Sure.
And we all ninety percent of time run out before twelve P M. And we, we're supposed to be doing all the way until twelve, until two. And um we just don't have enough and part of that is because our Thanksgiving meal took up so much money. We in the past had to buy all of our turkeys, we had to pay for all of our green beans and all this stuff and uh, cuz nobody would donate.
Yeah.
And it it's been, it's been a very small group of people who've been on the board, who they've got overwhelmed, they've been on the board for ten years.
They tired.
You know, they're tired and so I'm, I'm a new person on the board and so when you're a new person on on a board and you have a lot, you have a lot of energy.
With red blood.
Mm-hmm.
And so I have taken on this project and I'm thankful.
And we support you.
That I have friends to support me and they're willing to donate towards this awesome cause that is the Thomas Street Thanksgiving Feast, that that's what we're calling it, the feast.
Yes, we do.
Is there a website, how how do you donate?
Um you can donate to me or you can donate, so Tom, there's no website because um Thomas Street is a five oh one three C, so we can give you a tax write-off. And but um if you wanna donate, you can contact me directly and we can make sure that um your your money will go towards um.
Yeah. Exactly, what you want it to.
What you want it to go towards, we have a specific program, we have two different um nonprofits, one is for the sandwich program.
Yes.
And one is for our Thanksgiving program. And then our toys is a other program that we also do.
Yes.
And even though it's not combined, um we have been just very um successful and providing toys for all of us.
Yes.
So if you wanna donate some green beans or cash, just let me know or some mashed potatoes, we do need them.
Or some mashed potatoes.
And it really makes, and you're, you're more than welcome to come on our show and to come um on um.
And you're welcome on our bus ride too with the kids, you're gonna have fun.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds fun.
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, come on with the bus ride for the kids, cuz if you're at, if you're at large, you're able to come and talk to the kids and, okay, we will love that.
Good luck you guys out.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm also, I'm also trustee with the Department of Education, so.
Okay.
And I we, and we have the most troubled uh children with the Department of Education.
I know, yeah, yeah, so all I'm trying to do is just narrow that gap and give these children a opportunity.
I'm I'm happy.
Because all they see, like in our neighborhood, I always see is, is they don't see successful people. I I know they see successful people, but if you see the drug dealer driving the Bentley, then you see me drive, I'm working every day.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're like, uh, I don't think I wanna be a teacher, no, I don't wanna do that, but I let them know because that's the area I grew up in it, but I don't, no longer stay there. And I tell them, I'm doing the same thing you're doing, I'm working on my, you know, finishing up my doctorate education. So I tell them, I was right there where you are, but look where I am now, so if I've done it, you can do the same thing.
That's right.
Yeah, so I just let them know and they didn't even know what a doctorate was, they didn't even know what a master's degree was, so. There's basic things like that I was, you know, explaining to our children.
Alright guys, so I have to wrap things up.
Yeah, they gonna put us out, huh?
But until next time, Eric, thank you so much for coming on our show.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for being um such a wonderful guest and transparent about what your issues are about the community.
If you're honest, if you're sincere, you can you can relate, if you hide it, it's a lot harder to relate.
Hey, I got that. Yes, and I do need your card and I'll keep it with that, you know, he said. Yes and I do need your card and I'll keep it with that you know he said.